I will now call to order the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Here.
Commissioner Kohoff.
President.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Okay, we can please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God.
All right, our next item is approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes for the August eleventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting, appropriation ordinance A dash zero eight two five two five, AP payment register zero eight two five two five, and sales tax and transient guest tax collections.
Um, just if, as a matter of discussion here, I don't think it's in our packet, but uh, there's a couple of line items. And I spoke with city manager Quin Day about this on credit card payments where it was just a single light item for that credit card. And I just asked that we include either that full credit card statement or some type of detail on that. Um, but with that, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
I'm just appreciating the inclusion of the sales tax and TGT collections. That's a, that's a nice thing to have in there.
No further discussion, move to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under public comments communications is six A, a public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address an item or address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, please just state your name and address and there's three minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Dr. Annie Hookman. I live at four ten northeast fifteenth street. Um, so I'm here to talk about the water drainage uh, solution or issue at fifteenth street. Um, I know that you guys probably don't know, but we've had a couple of meetings um, with Brad Anderson and the um interim city manager and the engineers. And uh, we would like to know if you would like us to direct or direct our concerns to you now, or would you like to wait until the study session?
Yeah, we've got it actually on our study session as an item, so it'd be best to address it then.
Okay, that's good. Um, I'm here with my husband Kevin, and then I think there's one other person that would like to address you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? State your name and address and there's a three minute time limit.
My name is Tom Miles. I live at one thousand one North Van Barren here in Abilene. I'm here to address the proposed funding of the Abilene Municipal Band. I've been a member of the group since nineteen eighty-two, both as a player and conductor, as well as band librarian. The band is the third oldest in the state, has performed continuously since eighteen eighty-one, except for course for the twenty twenty COVID nineteen season. We've survived two world wars, fires, Great Depression and hot and humid Kansas summers. We generally perform twelve concerts annually, averaging around thirty-five players and audiences of a hundred plus listeners. Many of our performances mark special occasions such as Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. We have played a Christmas concert at the Eisenhower Center every year since nineteen eighty, many to standing room. To the delight of President Dwight D. Eisenhower, the band marched to both inaugural parades in Washington DC. A highlight in the band's history was our performance at the Eisenhower Centenary in nineteen ninety. The band shell in Eisenhower Park is dedicated to Pearlie Royer, who was bandleader for sixty-three years from nineteen twenty to nineteen eighty-three. Abilene Middle School Band Director Toby Weisler, my student, led the group for twenty-five years from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand twenty-one, establishing important traditions like the kids' march, which children with American flags parade through the audience, the annual exchange concert with the Salina Municipal Band, where we perform at each other's venue, the annual jazz band concert, featuring outstanding area musicians, and the invitation to talented high school and middle school musicians to join the band. Band members receive fourteen dollars a week for rehearsals and concerts, about four dollars an hour. The directors are paid a fee as well as the band librarian and custodian. Three groups have spun off in the band over the years. The eight-member Brigade Band founded in nineteen eighty by tuba player Fred Schmidt, plays Civil War era music and has performed at Fort Riley, Fort Scott, and numerous Kansas Statehood Balls. The Heart of America Concert Band founded nineteen eighty-eight practices and performs over three weekends each fall. These groups, along with the Jazz Pig Band, rehearse at the Royer Band Shell and use music from our extensive band library. The only municipal band expense is gas money for jazz band members traveling a distance. Performers and audience members do spend money at local restaurants and gas stations. All concerts are admission free. The Abilene Municipal Band has been a part of the fabric of the community for one hundred and forty-four years. This band of brothers and sisters gives of their talent, time, and treasure in order to enrich the lives of its listeners. Music unites us, makes us feel good about ourselves, our community, and our country. Please continue funding us so we may bring you quality performances for many years to come. Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question. I believe we submitted a request for expenditures from the band, and we've not received any detail on that. Is that something that you or someone else from the band can provide?
They were emailed out Friday.
Friday? Okay, I did not see them. I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks for your time consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our first business item seven A. Consider approval of resolution number zero eight two five two five dash one. A resolution authorizing certain signatures on deposit accounts at financial institutions for the City of Abilene, Kansas interim finance director, Brian.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the resolution authorizing certain signatures on the deposit accounts for the city. Uh, previously last meeting that we brought it to you, it had specific institutions listed, and we just took those out and as directed by you guys.
Any questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero eight two five two five dash one.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven B. Discussion regarding the scope of work for the Buckeye Sea Clip Project interim city manager, Quin Day.
Let's you bring that up. In March of twenty-three, the city was awarded to uh, city connecting week improvement program uh, surface preservation grants through KDOT, each valued at four hundred thousand dollars each. There are ninety-ten splits uh, for construction and um, other eligible costs. The first sea clip project is from twenty feet north of the Union Pacific Railroad crossing to Fifth Street, and the second is southwest Sixth Street, south of the city limits. Uh, those include milling and overlay, curb and gutter replacement, uh, sidewalk replacement and ADA compliant ramps. At the last meeting, the commission asked staff to check on the, if we could reduce that scope to uh, just eight hundred thousand dollars. We reached out to KDOT, uh, the grant uh, people that gave us that and also to our fine financial advisors. Based on that information, um, the full scope of the project is estimated at one point three seven million dollars. Keeping in mind, that's just an estimate. City won't know the actual cost until uh, bids are submitted and received and reviewed by uh, the city and the engineers. The reduced cost of eight hundred thousand dollars uh, has a total of one point zero eight million when you factor in uh, KDOT's covering seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars and the city's covering two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That two hundred and seventy-nine thousand includes uh, non-participating costs that would be required as well as the engineering fees uh, required for the grant. The next page, Kelsey. The uh, design engineering is uh, two hundred and two thousand three hundred and seventy-five. That's combined for both. Sea Clip One's approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and Sea Clip Two, which is an agenda item uh, on this meeting, is forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The city also incurred approximately two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in bond issuance and capitalized interest just for the one point nine million dollars uh, the general temporary obligation notes issued for that project. So total unrecoverable cost uh, currently standard around four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Cutting the scope of the project does not erase these uh, sunk costs forty-eight. So the planning uh, of milling, overlay, curb and gutter sidewalks, ADA ramps, um, and they're funded. If the reduced scope, the stormwater inlets, curb and gutter and sidewalks will be deferred, uh, future repairs will cost more. Of course, with inflation and uh, no grant leverages, and so we'll pay more for work that's already been planned and approved by the city commission. The full scope is uh, as it relates to in the future, high credibility, a strong local match. As I mentioned in uh, conversations with the commission, the city was awarded the two grants based on points that it received, and you get additional points the more that a city contributes to a project. Um, if we reduce the scope, we lose some credibility with KDOT and it can have a negative impact on future applications. KDOT stated that uh, the projects were selected based on the scope of the project and the city's uh, commitment to its portion of the share. You can technically reduce the scope uh, but those cities that did not receive funding may have because uh, we wouldn't have committed as much as originally approved. Uh, they didn't outright say it, but basically negative impact on any future applications. So a lost investment if reduced would be about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's unrecoverable. Uh, the reduced scope will still cost the city two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The deferred infrastructure work will refute result in higher future costs and will put future KDOT grant eligibility at risk. The full scope protects the city's investment credibility and infrastructure needs. Now, if we uh, were to change the scope, we could redeem part of that, those bonds early. Uh, the full scope, the city uh, issued one point nine million dollars in general temporary obligation notes. Uh, our share would be approximately five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which means that we could redeem one point three million dollars as early as March one of twenty twenty-seven. The estimated savings from our financial advisors would result in ninety-two thousand dollars in interest savings by doing so. That, that is at the full scope. Our reduced scope, one point nine million dollars was uh, bonded. Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars being the city's cost. We could redeem one point six million dollars as early as March, and the savings would be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So the difference of savings of interest between the full scope and the reduced scope is approximately twenty thousand dollars. So uh, staff's recommendation is that the city commission proceed with the full scope of the project as originally approved through the KDOT grant uh, and through the bonding process. Are there any questions?
Um, I do have a couple of questions here. I think one of the things that another member of the public has brought up was the cost of the sidewalks and whether that's appropriately uh, a public expense or the responsibility of the adjacent property owners, and I guess it's his uh, his thought anyway, that by having those private entities take care of their own sidewalks, even if um, I guess it would just be the reduced expense. Like he gave an example of another project that you can see down on the corner of Third and um, Buckeye right now that um, I'm not sure what the cost per square foot was on that, but I would be curious to know. I'm also looking at this, and it looks like we've got about fifteen percent in design engineering costs, which seems absolutely absurd. Um, but I'm, I'm almost quite, I'm quite certain that this did not go out to bid, and so maybe shouldn't be surprised that those costs are, are higher than they would be um, if we were requiring engineers to bid on those uh, those projects. Um, I guess I'm gonna remain steadfast on this. I'm, I, you can see the numbers right in front of you here. We've got an estimate of one point four million dollars for a project. We took out one point nine million dollars in bonds. It, I, I still don't understand. I think we were told that we were gonna be able to draw on those as needed, but they're sitting in our bank account right now. Um, I think one potential benefit or one upside is that we um, hopefully are going to be getting some interest on those. I'm curious uh, to know um, Kelsey, if you could share with us maybe later, what kind of rates we're looking at for holding that, holding that money. Um, I just, I'm just really kind of beside myself on this whole project. Um, I think we need to be doing better for our, for our citizens. Um, and we're putting, we've been put in a really awkward position where we have to either spend money or, or look bad to KDOT, which has historically been a very good partner for us in helping us take care of some of our local infrastructure. Um, you know, I, I think that it's in every citizen in here's best interest and every citizen that's sitting at home or watching on TV, watching on YouTube, that we don't spend their money irresponsibly. And those sidewalks are absolutely not the responsibility of the city. Um, if we decided maybe we want to help out with those at some point in the future, I think we have another program to help out with residential sidewalks. I'm certainly open to having that discussion. Um, you know, potentially we could do that with some of the uh, excess interest that's garnered. Um, but I think that those individual businesses are the best ones to choose the time and the scope of those projects. And um, you know, I'll, I'll personally write an apology letter to everybody at KDOT uh, for the misunderstanding here, but I think we need to be responsible with our funds at this time. So I'm going to be revoting, I'm going to be voting for a reduced scope project. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I know, Kelsey, the bond was at three point two two. Um, don't know on the interest savings that that one has been allocated yet to a financial institution.
Four percent.
Four?
Four percent for uh, CDs. The uh, the design engineering that uh, Commissioner Kohoff said approximately fifteen percent. I'm not sure the percentage of it. I do know that uh, I talked with Olson Engineering and also with Brad Anderson, the Public Works Director, to break down the cost of that. Uh, when this project was initially uh, discussed and approved, um, there was a scope of work. Then that scope of work changed, which include bump outs. I'm not sure what the technical name is to put the extensions at the intersections, and then that was reduced. Um, when you change that scope and you put the bump outs in, then it requires additional surveying because now you're changing the flow of water for drainage. So that's uh, part of the increased cost from the original engineering for Sea Clip One. The uh, engineering for Sea Clip Two was fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars and working with uh, Olson, they've reduced that down to forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And also the construction engineering is do not exceed fee. You're not locked into that ninety-eight. That is built on time and uh, basis, so it's not to exceed, though it may not be that amount. Um, I'm not sure that the apologies or whatever would be towards KDOT would go towards KDOT. I think their issue is the other cities that missed out on the uh, funding because of the city's commitment and approving a scope of work on a project. And then the interest that we could earn by setting that money there before the early redemption, I'm not sure that, I'd have to check, but I highly doubt that you're gonna be able to use that for another project or program. Uh, currently, we had five thousand dollars in the budget for sharing sidewalk replacement costs with residential customers, and that was reduced because of budget cost. But to take some of that interest and put it into a program for commercial uh, sidewalk replacement, I do not believe would be um, you couldn't do it with the interest from the bond proceeds while it's sitting there. That can be used to buy down the redemption or pay it down early. The other option is if, if there are issues with raised sidewalks or uneven sidewalks, and it's the commission's position that that's the business owner should fix it. Um, I believe the ordinance allows for us to direct that to be done, and if it's not done, then the city uh, pays for it to be done and then recoups that cost over time. So this uh, from the outside looking in, the project was already approved by the commission. You borrowed the money for it, right or wrong. The scope was approved. You borrowed the funds uh, and doing anything other than that full scope jeopardizes your credibility with KDOT and could increase your costs in the future uh, by having to do that work regardless. Uh, I'm not asking for any action on this one. The next two items uh, which would be the supplemental agreement for KDOT uh, which Brad Anderson will come up and discuss. That is the agreement for the grant that uh, the commission has already approved with KDOT. The supplemental combines those into one project, and then the uh, next one would be the engineering agreement amendment for Olson for the forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the design of Sea Clip Two and not to exceed ninety-eight thousand dollars for construction engineering, which is an inspector on site that's required from KDOT on uh, any projects that KDOT funds in part.
Is that um, inspection for both projects? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, while this is a discussion item, do we have any, I guess, further questions or um, discussion on the specific scope of the project before we move into the next two items?
Mr. Mayor, are you gonna take any public comment on that?
Yeah, we can. But yeah, if we don't have any other questions for city staff on that item. And do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this specific item regarding the scope of the sea clip projects? You could just state your name and address, and there's a three minute time limit.
I'm Joyce Minson at nine oh two Maple. I didn't know much about this, but I did work downtown, and our sidewalk in front of our building was needing some help. It needed a ramp and stuff, but the business owners, that's pretty expensive stuff. And so the business owners were struggling. One of the neighbors contributed nothing. I think the city had to come in and help. But as our businesses are struggling and we want a town, it does put a lot on our little business.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anyone else in the audience that wants to uh, comment on the scope of the sea clip projects? Okay. And just I'll check once again for any further questions or discussion from the commission. Seeing none, we will move into item seven C. Consider approval of supplemental, supplemental agreement number one with the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for the Sea Clip Project, South City Limits to South Sixth Street and Union Pacific Railroad to North Fifth Street. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. Um, so I'm here to um, basically discuss the supplemental agreement with KDOT, and for members in the audience, just to be clear and, and watching, um, this is the agreement that uh, is actually signed and approved on the project but with KDOT. So this is, we uh, we re- basically, Mr. Quin Day highlighted a lot of the topics that were just discussed. Um, an original agreement was signed and approved by commissioners for the original project, but now that KDOT has combined the two project into one, it's technically called a supplemental project um, to combine them, just exactly what I said, into the two units. So this would um, basically combine the Sea Clip One, which we refer to as the North Sea Clip, um, from the UP railroad tracks to North Fifth Street, and then Sea Clip Two, we refer to as the South End of Town from the South City Limits to South Sixth Street. Um, so uh, if I'm correct, um, this is where we basically need some action so we know that we can enter it into agreement with KDOT for the two combined projects. I know looking ahead, I don't want to jump ahead too far, but I, I wanted to be clear that this is the KDOT agreement. Um, because the next topic of discussion here that, that you're gonna hear from me um, would be the work order amendment um, for the engineering to combine the two projects. Um, we do not, as a reminder, have an agreement um, on the second phase of the Sea Clip as engineering wise at all. That will be the first time introduced to combine with Sea Clip One, which once again, we had that, that agreement already set to. But back to basically where we're at, uh, supplemental agreement. I know you guys um, have the agenda um, letter in your packet, uh, and we just at this point need guidance and know where we need to go, because um, that way, we're either not at a standstill or we continue to, can, can continue to move forward. So looking for some direction here.
Just um, I think for clarity for everyone here, uh, can you identify what was originally Sea Clip One and Sea Clip Two, which was north and which was south?
Sea Clip One would have been the north section, the first section that we um, like I, I mentioned, we technically had an agreement and for engineering and the project on that one, but now that KDOT has combined the two projects into one, and that throws Sea Clip Two, which would have been the south end in, in my world, um, down on the South City Limits into the one project.
Just um, maybe looking to city manager Quin Day here, this agreement says that the uh, I'm gonna make sure I'm giving you the exact language here. The construction engineering is ninety percent, is covered ninety percent by KDOT, and I think that might conflict with what um, you just stated in the previous presentation. Did I misunderstand that? I'm looking at um, page one of twelve on the agreement, which is page thirty-seven of our packet, and that's under article one, definitions number two, the Sea Clip SP Resurfacing Program.
Yeah, the construction engineering is a participating cost. That would be the ninety-eight thousand dollars. When I went over the uh, cost, for example, of the uh, reduced scope, the construction estimate was seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars with the construction engineering at ninety-eight thousand eight ninety-five, with the total participating cost at eight hundred and eighty-seven, making KDOT share seven hundred ninety-eight thousand. Then you throw in the engineering, the design engineering, a hundred and sixty thousand that uh, was already spent on Sea Clip One and the forty-one thousand, which is an action item after this agenda topic. So.
Okay, thank you. So just so I'm clear, the design engineering is not covered. The construction engineering is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to add on to uh, Brad's, the uh, if the commission approves the supplemental agreement with KDOT, they are approving it under the um, original scope of the Sea Clip One and Two.
Have any further questions for city staff on this item? And I know um, glad you brought that up earlier. During this time is when, if anyone in the audience has a comment or question on the project, they may come up at that time. We don't have it specifically laid out in there, but just so everyone is aware.
Does uh, this scope include narrowing the area of the block, I guess, where Eminem Tire is located? Okay.
No, and, and once again, I'll just kind of throw this in as a reminder. The original scope of the project or when we were in the planning phase of design engineering, um, KDOT themselves had uh, quite a few remarks and comments of upgrades and stuff that they wanted. Um, I think um, the narrowing of the street alignment between fourth and fifth was one of them. Uh, I know the bulb Alps was one. Um, by the way, they, they threw them uh, in there. Um, basically, it's uh, getting to be a standard thing, a safety factor for pedestrians. I think we went through that whole discussion quite a while back and, and, and ultimately a decision was made to remove those. So um, that's, that's where some of the initial stuff came from when we put together um, phasing one. Um, but now- Phasing one, but now we've simplified it. The big question that is, in my opinion, is. Obviously, I want the scope of work on the on the roadway done. If if we were to ever turn this down, I don't know where the city of Abilene is going to be able to contribute. Our own four hundred thousand dollars worth of rep of expenses to the to the street. So having that in there as part of it, I think at this point, the decision is coming down to whether or not. The scope of the sidewalks and. The ADA complacency is is something on the the intersections. And we've discussed numerous times the the curb inlets. I think most any of you could walk between Third and Fifth Street and physically look at the curb inlets and know we have problems. In my opinion, I the curb inlets. Just need replaced and reset, we do not know, and I'd like to think that we underneath. With the curve and that's hooked to to the actual drainage structures underneath the piping, that we actually have to do anything. We don't have to do anything, we don't want to have to do anything with them, so hopefully there's not money expenditures there. But I think the decision right now just comes with what what scope do you want us to to continue in and and go with?
Okay, have any further questions for staff on this item?
I guess I'm a little, I guess. Brad, you said you don't know where we're going to come up with four hundred thousand dollars, but we're coming up with one point one, or at least we've taken bonds for one point one.
No, the the clarification or what I meant by that is KDOT throws in. As part of their project, they'll their four hundred thousand per side, per project, so once again, they've doubled it. Per project, it's four hundred thousand per project. My point taking was there, if if the city of Abilene was going to pay for the mill and overlay. Of those two blocks. I got a lot of streets I'd like to go mill and overlay, but coming up with that. That money that KDOT is willing to participate with is is basically what I meant. Once again, that's four hundred thousand per C clip one slash C clip two, the two sections put together.
Any further questions for city staff?
City staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the supplemental agreement number one. For the project zero two one U two five zero four zero one as presented by KDOT.
And I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion?
To reiterate things that I've said in in past meetings, the question. That's hinging right now is whether it's the city's responsibility on those sidewalks, it's clear it's not. So then the question is, does the public, is there a broader public good by fixing those sidewalks? It's the same question that we have that we're discussing on this. Later on in the study session with the Fifteenth Street Art of Drainage Project, not technically the city's responsibility to fix that. But is there a broader public good that's had by the city being involved? And so that's where I see in fixing those sidewalks where. A lot of those businesses wouldn't be capable of fixing them, even though it's their responsibility, there's a broader public good. To having those sidewalks fixed to where they aren't tripping hazards anymore throughout the downtown area, so. Again, that's why, that's why I'm for this original scope, that's why I've I've voted to approve the original scope and pass meetings.
To that point, I haven't been for a single thing on this project, and so I'm not going to be voting for your scope, I respect your your opinions.
Have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will move to roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Nay.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven D, consider approval of an engineering agreement with Olson for the C clip project. South City Limits to South Sixth Street, Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, once again. Now that we have a project. We're looking at an amendment to combine the engineering. For both C clip one and two, just like we have for the project itself. We already entered agreement into the north phase, which we called C clip one, to be cleared once again. Now looking at the. Adding the the phase to begin engineering on C clip two, which is the south end. That amount that was. On the compensation plan was forty one thousand five hundred dollars for the engineering to begin on that. I think a comment was made in the phasing for the scope of services. That. There's a on time. And expense basis not to exceed ninety eight thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars for onsite engineering. In my opinion. That's where the city of Abilene gets their most beneficial use. That that amount might not approach that, but to be sure that an engineer is onsite, making sure. That everything is the way it's actually expected to be according to the plans. Is the greatest benefit that I see out of it. I'm generally used to that scenario, even in my my past job experience with. Engineering techs is what they would call them, but. So here we are visiting the actual engineering agreement now, if you. Have any in-depth questions that would be above. Anything I would know, Mister Mark Bashant is in the audience today from from Engineer from Olson's.
Is there a reason that the design and the supervision were combined in the same agreement?
Yeah.
I guess the follow-up question is.
What I was gonna say, but.
Yeah, I guess the follow-up question is if either of these were put out to bid.
Actually put out to bid, I don't, I don't believe they were, they, I think we were just following. Our. Basically sole, not sole provider, but our engineering agreement that we have on file that you guys passed after the beginning of the year.
It's my understanding that even though we have that engineering agreement, we can and have put engineering projects out to bid, is there a reason why this one wasn't?
I do not have that answer specifically for you, other than since it's a combined. Project, I think would be in our best interest at this point to, since we have the engineer agreement on the first part. To combine with the second part also.
How does the design engineering, I mean, you can have a different design engineer, we've done that previously, correct, and had different supervision on maybe like the airport or the. Water plant, we've got, we've had different design and construction engineers on those projects, haven't we?
I. I don't know that I've been here long enough to answer those questions of technical, and whether or not we've had different engineering. I think every project I've been involved with so far has been the sole engineer with with the exception of one. At the wastewater treatment plant, where Olson was asked, but we also went with the. Contractors in that specific project went with the contractors. Who built the buildings, previous engineer.
I guess it's just my recommendation that we put everything out to bid, I think we have that flexibility and I think we owe it to our citizens to. Get the best price for them.
Generally, for engineering in cities that don't have the luxury of having their own professional engineers on staff. Will likely have a master service agreement with a engineering firm for civil engineering projects. Does not keep the city from going out for specific projects and going out for bids for engineering firms. However, generally, engineering firms. Or even for legal services, you start off with a quest for qualifications. Where you determine that they're qualified to do what you want them to do, and then you negotiate prices. It's my understanding that the city went through an RFQ or request for qualifications for engineering. Through that process, they chose Olson Engineering and have a master services agreement with them. You have separate or specialized work such as the water treatment plant where. You know, you want a specific structural engineer or. A hydrologist and maybe it's not in their wheelhouse, and I'm not saying it's not with Olson's, you go out with with others. One of the, I guess, issues you could face by not having an on-call or a master. Agreement with an engineering firm is a lot of the grants that you'll apply for will require a preliminary engineering report. And a whole bunch of other things that you must submit with the grant application that are provided by your engineer. So, timing wise of grants, sometimes you have six months, maybe a year, sometimes you have three months. But if you come across the grant that you need a quick professional engineering report to submit with that grant application, having them on. On call, such as with the master engineering agreement, is beneficial to the city. There's nothing that says that the city commission can't have staff go out and issue a new request for qualifications and. Based on that, negotiate price to make sure that you're getting the best. Cost. The most, I shouldn't say the cheapest, but the best benefit for the city. But having a engineering company, a master agreement with them. Basically on call is beneficial to the city operationally and for applying for grants. But it does not preclude us from making sure that we're. Getting the best bang for our buck.
Have any further questions for city staff on this item?
If there aren't any other questions, staff recommends that the commission approve the Masterwork Order Agreement number one. With Olson Engineering dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty five as presented and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
I'll make the motion to approve that this agreement, engineering agreement with Olson for the C clip. Project, South City Limits to Sixth Street and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Nay.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven E, twenty twenty six budget presentation and approval of the publication of the notice to exceed. Revenue neutral rate and the budget public hearing setting both for September eighth, twenty twenty five at four o'clock PM during the regular city commission meeting. For purposes of the twenty twenty six budget, interim city manager Quinde.
Well, I hope she's not watching, but I know what it's like for my wife to lose a heel, because I just did. My lip, it's because of my shoe.
That one's at least probably a little shorter than hers.
Thank you, the proposed twenty twenty six budget that's before the commission now. Represents the next step in addressing the financial challenges currently facing the community. Recognizing that each financial decision has long-term consequences for the community. The proposed budget takes the balance approach, meeting essential service needs while. Laying the groundwork for restoring long-term fiscal stability for Abilene. Declining fund balances from structural deficits, which accumulated over several years. Significantly reduced reserves and in some cases zeroed them out. The revenue neutral rate remains a significant contributor to the pressure that the city has faced. While intended to limit the tax burden on property taxpayers, the policy has held property tax revenues flat. Although operational and capital costs did not slow down or were not. Reduced equally. That directly impacts the city's ability to sustain essential services, invest in infrastructure and maintain long-term fiscal health. Even enterprise funds which not rely on property tax. Particularly water and wastewater face similar strain. The current rate structures are not sufficient to cover the operation or the capital improvements required in the next five to ten years. In response, city staff has implemented immediate cost savings, which began in July, to stabilize current operations. And. What we're presenting today is intentionally structured both as a financial plan, which budgets are intended to be. But also a foundation for long-term recovery recovery, as it reflects disciplined spending. Funding allocated only to essential operations, and specifically, the twenty six budget includes a reduction workforce. Reduction of several employees' positions, no cost of living or merit-based pay increases for employees. And no capital investments or major equipment purchases that the city is not already obligated to in twenty five or twenty six. These reductions are significant, significant, but they're also necessary to bring the city into compliance. With its own policy for reserve balances and to ensure financial recovery. The challenges are real, but Abilene is not without its strengths, chief among those is the dedication of your city staff. Your employees and department directors have shown remarkable commitment to cross-training. Sharing responsibilities and adapting operations to reduce costs and maintain essential services. Their professionalism, creativity and service-oriented focus and genuine care for the community. Have been central to sustaining core functions even under the significant resource constraints. The success of the city's recovery is going to depend not only on sound policy and financial policy planning. But also on the continued commitment of your dedicated staff members. The proposed twenty twenty six budget includes an ad valorem tax rate of forty seven point five three seven mils, which includes thirty four. Mills for the general fund, eight mills for the library, two point seven mills for debt service and two point four mills for fire apparatus. If you look up on the screen, it's in your packet, and I should have printed this much bigger, you can see there that. This is the certificate page, which shows that the general fund as presented would receive approximately two point four million dollars in property tax. Debt service, one hundred ninety one thousand, the library, five hundred and eighty thousand, and cap fire apparatus at one hundred and seventy thousand. The pie chart shows you the percentage where the general fund of all property tax levied for twenty twenty six. Would receive seventy two percent. That seventy two percent includes departments, which is city manager, finance, city clerk, police, fire. Streets, blood maintenance, parks. The city pool, community development, inspections, municipal court, the senior center and the civic center. All of those are covered by that seventy two percent or two point four million dollars. The library receives seventeen percent, fire debt service six percent and fire apparatus five percent. I do want to point out that the seventeen percent of the library is not seventeen percent of the total budget. That's seventeen percent of the property tax levied, so it's not seventeen percent of seventeen million dollars. Farther down on that sheet, you'll see in the blue box that we have. Two point seven nine million dollars budgeted for expenditures for water and two point two for the wastewater. Those are assuming the revenue increases. The, I'll get into the utilities as we go down. The next page shows you the allocation of motor vehicle and recreational vehicle taxes, it's based on the prior year's. Property tax receipts. So the ad valorem levy for tax year twenty four, the city received approximately three million dollars. This formula on this page shows where that gets distributed by, it's not a decision of staff, that's by statute. The next page is the schedule of transfers. There is a correction from what I sent in the packet and what you have in front of you to what's on the screen. The general fund CVB transfer proposed for twenty twenty six in your packet says twenty five thousand. It's actually fifty thousand dollars, doesn't change any of the numbers, it was a typo. That was left at fifty thousand dollars until the issue with transient guest tracks not being submitted on. submitted on time or the full amount is resolved, which we hope to have done in less than twelve months. Also, you'll notice that the proposed amount going from the water fund to the water equipment reserve is significantly higher, from one-hundred thousand to seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. That's just an accounting change. Uh previously, those capital outlay funds for water utility were in their operational budget. By placing them here in the schedule of transfers, it's clear to the commission and to the public that we're transferring money for future infrastructure improvements, not having it embedded somewhere in an operational budget. Uh the next page is the debt service. Uh we have four-hundred-nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars uh budgeted expenditures in twenty twenty-six. That covers the two-thousand-seventeen general obligation bond, which was for the Highland Cedar and Dawson project, and the two-thousand-and-nineteen general obligation bond for street wastewater and water treatment plants. That required a tax levy of hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. The next page is the uh statement of conditional lease purchase. Those are is a listing of all the lease purchased that the uh city has incurred. And for payments due in twenty twenty-six, that drops from four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand down to two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. A step in the right direction. The next page is the general fund and the one that gets the most attention uh because it relies on property taxes. The highlighted green area is the unencumbered cash balance each year. So at the end of twenty twenty-four, the general fund ended with just under one-point-nine million dollars. In twenty twenty-five, it ended in uh it's estimated to end in one-point-three. That was going to be much less because but for the reductions and uh cost-cutting that city staff did and is projected to do. On the next page, you'll see that the transfer highlighted in yellow to the equipment reserve uh in twenty-four was three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, then reduced down to two-hundred-and-fifty-eight for this year, and is down to a hundred-and-eighty thousand for twenty twenty-six. That is to cover lease purchase payments. It is not for the acquisition of any new equipment. So, the patrol cars and other vehicles that normally would have been purchased this year uh have been frozen, and unless directed differently by the commission, will not be. And in twenty twenty-six, there'll be no purchases of equipment, major equipment. Um and you can see on the bottom of that page there where it says unencumbered cash balance December thirty-first. At the end of twenty-four, one-point-three million, end of twenty-five, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's the one that in July or my first buzz- budget presentation discussion with the commission was around three-hundred thousand dollars. So, your city staff has been able to reduce expenses by about five-hundred thousand dollars. That's sending uh part-time employees uh home three or two or three weeks early, uh doing more more or less cutting expenses, things that we just core expenses that we need. Now, it may be seem, okay, we can do that, so we can do it all year and next year. They've cut those down enough where you're not investing or replacing things that should be uh in a timely manner. It was, remember, you have uh your day-to-day operations, but you should also be planning on what are we going to need in one year, three years, five and ten years? So, rather than borrowing every time we need something, we switch to, we're starting to save money to pay cash, and then we prioritize what we purchase based on how much cash we have, not how much we think we can afford to borrow. Um, and that little blue box, which you can't, I don't know if you can see, uh but it shows that in twenty-three, the unencumbered cash was about one-point-nine in the general fund, dropped to one-point-three, and twenty-five, it's estimated to be eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. And even with the corrections we've made, in twenty-six, it's estimated it'll only be two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. Significant drop. The next page in the general fund is the detail. Uh one thing I want to point out is that we're starting to use less classifications for costs. Uh if you look at a department's budget, it could have ten, fifteen, or more line items on different things they purchase. We're breaking those down into contractual, commodities, salaries, and capital outlay. Contractual are things that are paid to outside vendors or service providers, such as legal, information technology, or software requirements. And commodities are physical goods or tangible things that the city uses and consumes, uh office supplies, road salts, fuel, tools, and parts. So you can see there that uh in previous years, everything was just lumped into commodities. Makes it very difficult for the commission or the public, or even department heads, to track what they're spending and uh what they need to plan for in future years. So by doing this, uh it'll give them a clearer picture as department heads managing uh their budgets, the commission as uh setting policy as far as the budget, and the public, where's our money being spent at? On the same page, uh you can see in twenty twenty-four under administrative where the commodities was seven-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, uh which was four-hundred thousand dollars more than anticipated. Those are the types of expenditures that will start eating away at your your cash reserves. If you if you budget to spend three-hundred thousand dollars and you spend uh seven-hundred-and-twelve thousand, you can't do that very often very long at all. Most of the uh department budgets uh have gone down. Some have stayed the same and some have increased. Generally, you're looking at increases, a twelve percent increase in health insurance cost is what's projected, so that was what was budgeted. But there are no uh cost of living increases or merit increases. Additionally, there were some items uh that were not budgeted for, such as software uh agreements that we have. And I'm talking, you know, tens, twenties, thirty thousand dollar annual costs that were not included in the budget as an expenditure, but we still had to pay for. But we've corrected that. They're identified, so that's why you'll see that some of those costs are up. We're not adding things. We're just accounting for what actually uh is required. The next page is the debt service. Um, as I mentioned before, the four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars go to those two uh bonds, twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. Requires a hundred ninety-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars in property tax, or approximately five-point-seven-three mils. Which that's a typo because that would be like three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Approximately two mils. The next one is the library. Um they are eligible for eight-point-two-two mils if they ask for it. The state law requires that uh whatever the library board asks for for funding, the city is uh obligated to fund unless it is otherwise limited or restricted by law. And when the commission adopted an ordinance that limits it at eight-point-two-two mils, that's the law that limits it there. Uh though, and then the library board made it uh sent me a notice that they do want the full eight-point-two-two mils, so that will generate them approximately five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in property taxes. In addition to the motor vehicle tax uh that they receive, uh their appropriation will be six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars in twenty twenty-six. Keeping in mind that the numbers that I uh I give you as far as property tax, those are estimates based on the numbers we get from the county clerk in July. The valuation is not actually certified until November, and that's when you'll know what the the actual numbers are. The airport has zero property tax levied. We did include uh intergovernmental revenue and capital outlay of eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. That is based on our assumption that the uh airport improvement grant will be approved for us to do the the ninety-five-five split for design, and then we apply for the ones for the hangar. This does not mean that you have to spend it. It just gives you the budget authority to do so. Fire apparatus, which uh covers the fire truck lease purchase and also uh bunker gear for twenty twenty-six, required a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in property taxes. And then capital improvement, uh there is zero dollars budgeted for twenty twenty-five. There was money budgeted for twenty twenty-five. We zeroed it out, so there would be no expenditures carry that money over. And there's no money budgeted in uh twenty twenty-six. That does great to uh keep our costs down, but it's also a slippery slope because uh at the next meeting or two meetings, we'll bring you tenure plans. If you're not putting the money away into a capital improvement or equipment reserve fund, you're going to start falling far farther and farther behind. I'm sure the commission knows, but maybe not all the public knows, that uh cities are not allowed to save money for capital projects or equipment. Unless they adopt a uh capital improvement plan and equipment reserve plan, then you can. That's the purpose of having that. So, funding it would be a good idea. Special highway, we get that uh estimate of revenue from the state of Kansas. And we also get eighty-two thousand dollars uh a year from KDOT as reimbursement for projects that we do. And so we have about two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars budgeted in receipts, uh makes our total resources three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. We're budgeting eighty-two thousand dollars for uh expenditures for road projects, uh maintenance-type items, and then two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars in cash reserves. That will allow the city to start building that up, for when you have a larger project, you can pay cash for it and not borrow money. Street sales tax, the estimate for uh revenue is four-hundred-and-forty thousand. We put four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in capital outlay, and that is for the street projects like uh Brad and his guys just had done with the micro-surfacing. Even though we put four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in capital outlay, it is not the staff's intent uh to spend that. When Brad and I talked, he plans on approximately three-hundred-and-sixty to three-hundred-and-eighty, depending on what the costs are a year, for the micro-surfacing to start addressing the streets. That's the purpose that the uh public approved the sales tax. But that also allows him, as you can see here, in twenty twenty-six, pull back sixty-three thousand, so you can start building that up again. I'll probably say this too many times, but the idea is to um start putting some money back, so you can pay for projects in the future with cash that you have and not have to borrow with. The recycling, um not much difference on that, but you will notice that the uh unencumbered cash balance is pretty much the same at fifty-two thousand, then it goes to seventy-four and projected at fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh you will see that we uh budget that down to, it's supposed to be zero, but the state workbook won't elect allow that to go to zero because it's a decimal point. That's not saying we're going to spend all the money that just you're not supposed to in special funds like this, uh save money. Stormwater, uh you receive about the same amount of money every year, sixty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety in twenty-five, we're estimating sixty-eight thousand in twenty-four, sixty-eight thousand in twenty-five and twenty-six, with expenditures uh matching that. At the end of uh twenty twenty-six, or in twenty twenty-six, you should have around six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. I believe the uh pool cash report shows over six-hundred thousand dollars now, which you can use. It will require that you amend the twenty twenty-five budget because you only budgeted to expend a hundred-and-eighteen thousand. But if you choose to do something with uh stormwater, you can do that. If you expend all six-hundred thousand dollars based on the revenue, it'll take you ten years to save that up again without any expenses. Special parks and recreation, that is a percentage of the alcohol tax that the state receive comes to the cities. Um it can only be used, this fund, for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of park and recreational facilities, programs, and facilities. Um special alcohol and drug, also part of the alcohol tax. We get those estimates from the state. This one's a little bit more restrictive, and it can only be used for the establishment uh maintenance or expansion of services or programs whose purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, uh detoxification intervention and treatment of persons who are alcoholics or drug abusers, or in danger of alcoholics or drug abusers. So that the those funds are used specifically for that purpose, and be contributed to private organizations that address those. Library pool renovation still has sixteen thousand dollars uh in it. The intent was to uh use that to pay part of the pool um refurbishing or the painting in it. I believe that the plan now is to hold off until twenty twenty-six. And then the water fund, these are your utility funds or which are referred to as enterprise funds. They take no property tax, and they're solely reliant on user fees. Um you can see here that the charges for service, which is the monthly customer charge that customers just pay, and their volumetric fee that they pay, how many gallons they use. In twenty-four, uh we brought in one-point-nine million. In twenty-five, we're estimating one-point-nine million. But when you look down, your expenditures are two-point-five million in twenty-four and two-point-five million in uh twenty-five. So your unencumbered cash balance goes from nine-hundred-and-fourteen thousand down to four-hundred thousand. And at this end of this year, is estimated to be fifty-one thousand dollars. It was going to be um eight-hundred thousand dollars in the negative. But uh Brad and Kelsey spent quite a lot of time going through, what can we cut now? Unfortunately, a lot of that cut was capital improvements or things that they need for the water plant uh to make sure that it's staying healthy and um the infrastructure is good.
Mr. Quinde?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt you here, but you do have the transfers to other funds. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, uh. The transfers to other funds, generally, uh enterprise funds and municipalities will transfer a certain percentage of their gross or projected revenue to the general fund, which would be similar to what a private utility would pay in the form of a franchise fee. They also transfer um can be transferred to their water equipment reserve fund, which you'll see here in uh twenty twenty-six, it goes from a hundred ninety-seven thousand to eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. That includes a transfer of seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand to the water equipment reserve, and that's for much-needed capital projects. Um you have a reverse osmosis plant that has filters and trains and things like that, that uh if you don't have the money when they're they break or they need to be replaced, you won't have a a treatment facility. So this is setting that money aside, so when you do need it, you have them there.
And for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, that those amounts were transferred to the general fund? Is that correct?
Uh no, it would be to the general fund and to uh their reserve funds.
Uh and I'm specifically asking here, you've got them highlighted. For twenty twenty-four, there was two-hundred-and-ninety-seven. Was that transferred to the general fund, or is there another place that that?
If you look at the uh schedule of transfers, uh which is, I believe, the third page, page three, the water fund transferred two-hundred thousand dollars of that was to the uh water equipment, ninety-seven thousand was to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh Brad and Kelsey and uh made significant cuts, so the utility did not um go in the deficit by several hundred thousand dollars. Um so, topic of a future discussion on the work study is revenue requirements for the utilities. The budget as presented shows the revenue from one-point-nine to uh up to two-point-eight. Uh this is assuming that the down the road, the commission approves a change in revenue, and also keeping in mind that this is just limits what your expenditures are. So just because it says we're going to bring in two-point-eight million dollars in water revenue, doesn't mean it, that's what we're going to bring in. But where it says that total expenditures are two-point-seven-nine million, means we can't exceed that without amending the budget. Anytime you amend the budget, you have to uh give public notice, hold a public hearing, uh answer objections from taxpayers or user payers, user fee payers, uh before you can vote on it.
Does this reflect revenue from the rural water district?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that just under charges for service?
Yes.
How much of the increase is due to the increase in their rate for twenty twenty-six?
The increase is uh put in there just to make sure that the utility is not in the negative in twenty twenty-six. What the increases are, who they're applied to, is a topic of a future discussion with the the commission.
And this, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, we renewed our agreement or extended an agreement with the rural water district to increase the revenue that we get per gallon, and it doesn't look like that is reflected, probably even in the estimate for twenty twenty-five.
Um, that's because the revenue uh increase is such a small portion of uh the total revenue of the water utility. So, the uh rural water district consumes about twenty percent of the water sold, but only accounts for three percent of the revenue that the city receives. And going off of memory, I believe it's uh it costs the city about five dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand gallons to produce water, but we sell it to the rural water district for a dollar eighty per thousand. So, uh if it's going to reflect in there, it's going to reflect as drawing that down.
Yeah, we think that was a forty-year, was that a forty-year?
Yes.
I think it was a forty year agreement, and it was last negotiated in twenty eleven, and then we did it again this year, earlier this year. And now there's an annual increase percentage that we can go up annually, correct?
But under current costs, you're still losing three dollars per thousand.
Yeah.
So the residential and commercial rate pairs inside the city are subsidized. I have more information on that at the revenue requirements. The sewer is the same way. The revenue is going to have to increase because even after significant cuts in twenty twenty five, Brad and Kelsey were able to get that from being in the negative at the end of twenty twenty five to having two thousand dollars left. So I plugged in charges for services at two point four five eight million dollars, and that is just covered the land expenditures. What those increases look like, how they're applied, that's future discussion. And I'll have some suggestions to make sure that it's done the most equitably among the customer classes. The Recreation Commission, the Rec Commission has their own levy, and then what's shown here is property tax and then fees. Kelly does a great job with the Rec Commission. You will see, though, that your cash reserve for twenty twenty six is down to twenty one thousand dollars. But that's in keeping in mind that that is everything in here under expenditures was completely spent. And that's not the case with the Recreation Department. Convention and Visitors Bureau, the hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and twenty five or transient guest tax is hopeful. After conversations with the Kansas Partner Revenue, there is a fifty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the CBB because of the reduction in transient guest tax. However, in twenty twenty six, we're budgeting that the remitters of transient guest tax will get back current and start remitting that regularly. There is fifty thousand dollars budgeted to transfer from the general fund to CBB. Because it's budgeted, doesn't mean that you have to do it. It's there as a safety net in case the transient guest tax continues to not be remitted fully.
Is there a way that we can provide some clarification to what will be a different commission for next year? Specifically on the fifty thousand dollars, I guess with the assumption that we do start receiving one hundred percent of the TGT that is due from the local hotels?
Yes.
How would we go about providing that direction to future commissions?
Yeah, can you re-ask the question?
Well, there's an election in November, and three of us may not be here, so. How could we provide that direction for a future commission that may not include you, for example? No, I know, but without your direction, if we have fifty thousand dollars in the budget, why would that, how would that commission know not to spend that fifty thousand dollars or to direct that to the CBB?
That would be short of the commission taking some formal action, which I've never seen before. It would be up to the manager and finance director not to transfer it. And generally, when a budgeted transfer is either not done or changed in the amount, the manager or finance director will come to the governing body and say, hey, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars to go here. We don't think it's necessary. So unless you object, we're not going to do it. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
The next page, in your packet, it may not have a title on it, but it's the Community Improvement or CID Sales Tax. This is a corrected page, you may have to look at the one that's up on the screen. The sales tax generated from the CID in twenty four was two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand and twenty five, and we're estimating the same for twenty twenty six. Two hundred and fifty four thousand of that goes back to those entities that have a community improvement district that was approved by the City Commission with two percent of that as an admin fee that stays with the city or approximately five thousand dollars. Non-budgeted funds are included in your budget, but as their name suggests, they're non-budgeted, and the only requirement is that twenty twenty four is reported. So you're two years behind a non-budgeted fund, but what you'll see here is this is what the fund started with in twenty twenty four and ended with in twenty twenty four. You have the Equipment Reserve, which started with two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty nine thousand was transferred in, made six hundred thousand dollars in resources available, two hundred and seventy five thousand was spent, leaving a cash balance of three hundred and fifty. You can follow those across in the non-budgeted funds are the Equipment Reserve, the Water Equipment Reserve, Sewer Equipment Reserve, Special Law Enforcement, ARPA, which was zeroed out, Sister City Scholarship, the Kansas Fights Addiction Fund, the Land Bank, Friends of the Park, and the Tree Board Program. The last page is the Notice of Budget Hearing that will ask the commission to approve, and that reflects the budget as presented. Once published, you can see it there where it has the proposed estimate tax rate. Once this is published, those numbers cannot go up, but the budget can be reduced. It just cannot be increased. So the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty six is forty seven point five three seven. That is an increase of four percent from the twenty twenty four add-to-lerum tax rate, which is for twenty five, a forty five point six four eight. It's more plainly stated, the current tax rate is forty five point six four eight, the proposed is forty seven point five three seven, which is about four percent, which is below the weighted rate of inflation for municipal operations we discussed before. I'd also like to point out that the twenty twenty six proposed overall budget is six percent or one point two million dollars less than the twenty twenty four budget. I did not include the twenty twenty five budget because it's in flux, and there were significant cuts made, so it wouldn't be a good comparison on trending. Are there any questions?
Um, I think this was sent out to the commission via email, but clarification on what fund does those allocations to outside entities, specifically City Band and Sister City. I believe both of those ten thousand dollar amounts are back in this budget.
Yes, they are in the administrative under contractual, rather than listing those as transfers. If they're listed as transfers, if we don't make them or they change, it's a whole different process. They're in that budget, and if the commission adopts the the budget, then those transfers will be made in twenty twenty six. Ten thousand dollars to the Sister City and ten thousand to the City Band. I know I went over a lot. We've been talking about it for several meetings in a row. The I just want to point out that it's not going to be fixed overnight, but you have a very amazing staff that has been working very hard to reduce costs now and are looking at ways to cut costs in the future. They're already working on helping each other out and doing services. This is, this is a road to getting the city back to a point where it's has healthy reserves and you can start moving towards paying things for cash, which would be ideal. You can reduce the levy if you choose. Doing so is not going to get you out of the predicament that the city finds itself in now. It'll probably make it worse or extend it longer. Even if we were to reduce expenses, whether in some other area, with the sole purpose of reducing that levy, which is less than one point nine mils, unless you put that order reserves, which said at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars based on this budget, you're just not going to get there. That's why we recommended the forty seven point five five six lid. Ideally, it would have been more, but everybody here is a taxpayer, me included, just not in Dickinson County, but city staff realizes that people have fixed incomes, people have to prioritize their bills and what they can pay for. And this is our best effort of putting the city back on a road to recovery without cutting core service. Our recommendation is for the commission to set the hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and the twenty twenty six budget hearing for four P M on September eighth, twenty twenty five, at the Abilene Public Library, and then to direct staff to publish the required notice.
I guess I would like to commend interim city manager Quinde and Ms. Breyond, and it sounds like Brad has been doing a bunch of work on this as well as all the, all the department heads. My personal preference is that we number one, stop spending money like drunken sailors, but also is to make the, maybe just largely, I don't know, ceremonial step of cutting taxes, even if it's a single dollar, to really show that we are taking this matter seriously and not just pushing it off onto our, onto our citizens. I don't know if, I guess I'd be looking to my fellow commissioners to see if they're open to a budget that accomplishes that. I realize we're not going to fix this overnight, but I don't want to make our spending problem our citizens' problem. And so I guess I'm just curious if you guys are willing to work with me to make that a possibility.
Are you talking being revenue neutral?
I, yes, or, or something below revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral would require about a two hundred and eighty five thousand dollar cut in expenditures, which would absence direction from the commission or other cuts would reduce your cash carryover to zero. Well, just under five thousand dollars, meaning that if your revenues don't come in as projected, or you come faced with an unforeseen expense, you won't have the money to pay for it. And I'm not arguing, you know, that's a policy decision, but I think it's incumbent upon me to point out that if you do absent direction of cutting that somewhere else, your reserve in the general fund will be down to almost zero.
I guess I would just point out some of the numerous things that you've, I guess I've pointed out a couple of them here, the fifty thousand dollars that we're not planning to spend, or we're hoping not to spend for CBB. There was a significant amount going to capital improvements, I think you said seven hundred and thirty five in the water alone.
Right, but that has no impact on property taxes.
Understand, thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that. And so I guess I'm asking my fellow commissioners if that's something that they're committed to, and if if not, I'll stop talking. If you are, I'd be more than willing to work with you to make that a reality.
Yeah, I think as historically as we look back, the city commission has last two years for sure has remained revenue neutral. I did some looking back and, and from twenty twenty to twenty twenty five, our property tax levied funds have only increased citywide about a hundred thousand dollars. So it's been extremely flat for the last five years. So I think we've shown that that is our commitment. I think that question requires more specificity on what exactly your proposals are for cuts. I can't just make a blanket statement.
I'm not looking for blankets. I'm willing to take any input that you have.
I guess what do you propose to cut to get back to revenue neutral again?
I think we really just need to look at everything. I mean, I think they've done, they were able to find a half a million dollars in shortfall just within the last half of this year, and so like I said, I would be willing to look at any options. I'm not I'm not trying to cut any budget, or I certainly don't want to cut any existing employees. I would be open to freezing unhired positions. I think that's probably the quickest and easiest. I think that there's a serious discussion about staffing levels, you know, throughout the city. It sounds like Mr. Quinde has found a lot of efficiencies and abilities to cross-train people, not just between jobs in one department, but across departments.
From what I understand, all those things have been done, and that's what this budget reflects.
Correct. We've had a hiring freeze since July. There are, and it'll have to correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe there's still two openings in Public Works. One, I told Brad he cannot fill this year or next year, but one he could. However, he hasn't. He's trying to get along as long as he can without it. I also told Chief Wilkins that at one point, I can't remember how many openings they had, but the position that was added in twenty twenty four in anticipation of a grant that he could not fill. So there, we have made those cuts and a lot of the efficiencies. Well, I'll just be blunt. I've been locked in my office looking at numbers for the last eight weeks, so ninety nine percent of the efficiencies found have been through your department heads and staff on ways to cut. Like I use the example of Kelly with Parks, came in and said that, you know, I'm going to send the part-timers home a couple of weeks early in an attempt to save, save some money, so they're doing what they can.
Are those positions that you mentioned in Public Works budgeted for twenty twenty six?
One is not. The one in Public Works that I told him he could not fill, and the one police officer that I told the chief he could not fill are not budgeted.
So what we have on our agenda item here today is publishing this budget, and again, this budget that sets the lid, I don't like revenue neutral rate, it's setting that hearing, it can be less. And so in one of the prior commission meetings, I made a statement of saying if, if it, if it's the public's goal to get to that revenue neutral or to even cut taxes, we're in a scenario where realistically that means cutting services. Because taking department heads at their word that they're finding all the efficiencies they can find, then it comes to the discussion if the public wants to see reduced services or not. Nobody's reached out to me saying reduce services. The only critiques towards the budget I've fielded have been centered around the library, and again, Mr. Quinde's highlighted the city commission's limitations on that. We have to set the mill of whatever they ask for up to that mill levy cap. At some point, the commission may make a change to that cap or, and in the coming renegotiation of the city's lease agreement, those are really the only points of control for the governing body. So that's been the only critique that I've fielded from the public. So that's where I see as this budget presented today. Good with publishing it, and if I receive more information from the public of what they, if they see efficiencies that can happen in other departments, we want to hear about it. If the public wants reduced services in other departments, let us know about it. So that that could still happen in this budget. Again, this is only stating what, what the max would be.
Just to clarify, Mr. Quinde, we are down three people in Public Works now. We just lost another one at the end of last week.
Shama, how many positions are open right now? By department, if you know off the top of your head.
Public Works, we have the three, Police Department, we have three. Two police officers and then and then I don't have those numbers in front of me. Sorry. Yeah, two police officers plus the assistant police chief.
City manager.
City manager.
Do we have any further questions on setting those hearing dates for next meeting, September eighth at four o'clock P M?
Would you need affirmative action from the mission?
I just opened it up to, that was a lengthy presentation. Anybody want to provide public comment here before we have some action from the commission?
Yeah, and as you stated too, that, you know, we're setting those hearing dates, but we've got two weeks until the budget comes back for a vote, so. Anybody that looks through it and can stay awake while looking through all of that is more than welcome to call, send emails, let us know what you think.
call, send emails, let us know what you think about it, how you feel about it. So Director Moulton?
Wendy Moulton, Library Director here. I passed out last meeting to the commissioners a memo kind of explaining what the library board decided for the budget for 2026. I think everyone's done kind of a good job of explaining how that works because a lot of people don't know, understand how that works. But if you have a concern about the library budget, the library board would be the people that have control over that. And they approved the budget at 8.22 mils for 2026. And that gives us an increase of $27,222 for 2026. And are, that includes no cost of living or merit increase for the library staff. And that doesn't account for, as Mr. Quinde mentioned, employee benefits are increasing. So $24,506 of that is going for employee benefit increases and 8,000 for our electric bill increase. As everyone hopefully is aware, Evergy is raising rates for everyone next year, including businesses. So with 24 going to just employee benefits and 8,000 for electricity, that is more than the $27,222 mill levy. So we've worked that into our budget with a total increase in our total expenditures for 2026 of $30,903, which is 4.55% increase for next year. I have all our budget documents available here at the library. I'm happy to answer questions and talk with people about just, you know, where that money is going and what we're doing with it here. So if you've made your way here, you know how to find me. If you're online, just come down to the library and I'm happy to talk and I can point you to any of the library board members if you want to speak with them about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
What was the mill levy for the library last year?
8.22.
They were maxed.
Valuation for certified, it dropped to 8.19.
Not seeing anybody give up to give comment. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve publication of the notice to exceed revenue neutral rate and the budget, public hearings. With the budget as presented today, setting both for September 8th, 2025 at four o'clock PM during the regular city commission meeting for the purposes of the 2026 budget.
I just want to clarify, I will be voting in favor of this only because I believe we're obligated to. But that is still my intention and I will bring a budget that is revenue neutral and I hope to have your support for it.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. There are no items for discussion under section eight. Under reports nine A, we have water source conditions report. City man, interim city manager Quinde.
I just want to introduce a monthly report that staff is going to start bringing to the city commission and the public and bring up Brad and Mike, come up and talk about it. But protecting the city's water sources is critical and making sure that the commission and the public hear regularly about their health and what we're doing about it. So if Brad taking a while to get up here.
Good afternoon. Once again, commissioners, yes, we're trying to implement a, a program where you guys can keep updated on our well status, our water sources for the city of Avaleen. So I, I have this gentleman here, Mike Blacketer, the water treatment plant superintendent, and that is his world. So if any questions come at the end and you get too technical on me, I'm going to refer to him. So most of you were provided the packet on the packet. It gives a lot of numbers that if you don't know what you're looking at, it's hard to understand truly what you are looking at. So for those of you in the crowd and at home, you can kind of see a brief PowerPoint here of, of what we're talking about with static and drawdown levels of a well. It kind of gives you indication arrows of what each series and what the terminology means on that. I think what we're trying to reflect here on the, on the next screen is what impairment means and each well has a static water level before pumping and the pumping level is the drawdown while it's running. Impairment represents an individual's well, an individual well's ability to produce water. High impairment equals the drawdown is such that the well cannot produce water. Low impairment equals the capability of producing water. We're at, at a level where 88% impairment that wells are used sparingly to aid in the wellfield recharge. And wells at 90% above are taken out of sequence to protect the well. So we don't collapse it. Honestly, we're waiting on a flood. We're waiting on heavy rains to help naturally refill them so that they can be utilized once again. And wells below 80% are what we're sequencing normally. So the next chart is really a brief run through of the wells and on your sheet. And I know the public can't really see this, but we have what we call our sand springs wells and our river alluvium wells. But once again, our, our water treatment plant was created with the purpose of engineering to be an RO plant. Yes, an RO plant does have a percentage, and I'd have to refer to this guy, of a little bit of a waste. But, and I will refer to him here real quick. High nitrate levels from where the sand springs wells come from. And can you explain that percent real quick?
Right now, somewhere between 16 and 20% waste on the reverse hook.
And the nitrate levels, what is normal and what are wells pump at?
Normally coming in is somewhere around 15 milligrams a liter. And once it goes through the whole process, we send it out about one and a half milligrams. Quite the reduction to ours.
Okay, so for clarification, the, the river alluvium wells are, are high in two, two products, and that is?
Iron and manganese?
Iron and manganese. And so we, we made a blend of those two is what basically we utilize to produce our water for everybody. So back to the original chart, you can see that we, we have some impairment going on with a couple of wells, and we do have some wells that supply a large majority of our water. Currently, our supply is tenable at the sand springs wells. That means basically functioning, doable at this point. River alluvium wells have a good water level. However, the chemistry makes their use limited and I, and we just kind of discussed that of the mixture of the blends work out of the plant. So we kind of have a process to maintain and rehabilitate our weakest wells. We did a couple shortly after I came here in the first year, we did a couple rehabilitations of well six and 16 that were much needed. We're continuing. Mike looks at these numbers almost every day. And we'll try and, we're going to give Mr. Quinde a, a weekly update. And we'll try and give you guys the update as we continue. This is something that he's been doing. But just to know, we're kind of bringing it to light so you can understand and see that we're constant, constantly monitoring everything. A, a big question on the very end of that is identifying and securing additional water sources. That, that's obviously a big issue with water rights and obtaining them and, and what steps. It's been several years ago and Mike just has a little bit of information. You know, we're talking 10 years ago where there could have been another source that was attainable, not saying that's out of the world yet, but it, that costs a lot of money to obtain rights, as you know, and that's the number one problem that almost every city and county across the whole state of Kansas is, is dealing with and, and how that is not an easy process. Both on the, the record and the things and financially. And Mr. Quinde is no better source than that, being involved in his issues out in Russell and Hayes. So did you have any questions? Real quick, we'll just try and wrap this part up. On the graphing, any questions per se?
But I just want to point out that a lot of people may think that if they have a, a well at their home that they use, it's on when they need water, it's off when they don't. But Mike has to manage a group of wells based on their ability to pump, how many gallons a minute they can pump and their water's chemistry. So it's not as simple as Mike just turning on wells for how much water we need. He has to blend those and, and do that pretty regularly and it takes a, a lot of work. And the idea behind this is to show you and the public how each of those wells is working and interact with each other. And Mike doesn't, he's forgotten more about water than I could ever know. So.
Yeah. And for those that can't see the chart and for the public out there, this is just a, a, an update. So I'll read this to you from August 17th to the 23rd. We pumped 11,319,000 gallons of water from the well sources to the plant. What was actually pumped into distribution was 9,457,840 gallons going to our, our residents, our any type of industrial situation, rule order one, all that good stuff. I just wanted to kind of throw out a little bit of tidbit information. We produce about a, a 2 million gallons of water capability a day. We do, our plant is capable, here's the key word here, capable of doing about 4.5 millions if we had the water to pump to it from our wells. We're, we're at a situation where we're, we don't have that amount of water coming out of the ground to pump. But the capability is there. So any other brief questions on that?
Yeah. What do we do with the, the waste RO water?
Right now it goes to our waste ponds on the north side of the plant and then runs down to Mud Creek and continues bearing on down Smoke Hill River.
Is there no utility for that? I guess either within the city or with wastewater treatment or anything?
Not at this time. We, there's certain rules and regulations. So you, you can only divert it. You can't prevent it from continuing this path down. Obviously, the Pika needs water. So we do what we can to limit our use here. So everybody downstream can continue to have water.
That's a requirement for the wastewater from the RO?
Yeah, yes. And, and one more thing, why we mentioned that, we're still in the process. I think we brought it to your attention earlier in the year. We've been having our yearly KDH inspections forever. And then all of a sudden, this last year, they showed up on site and said, we now have to monitor with an official flow meter, a flow meter chart of the RO water and what we're sending back down. So we're in that process of having that. It has to be engineered. Therefore, because it's KDH, we can't just do it ourselves. We've been in that process. We have a plan in place. I think we have until next calendar year, and I don't, the, the date off the top of my head goes by, but you'll be hearing more about that. Process as it's a mandated KDH to stay in compliance. Okay. That wraps up that part of it. And the only other thing I have real quick, why I'm up here on a report, if you're okay with that, is just an FYI officially, I did submit the federal fund exchange to KDOT since we've last met. So that amount of $82,080 82,080 and 30 cents should be coming back. That is a KDOT reimbursement for doing improvements within your city. The amount that you can collect, Mr. Quinde, I think touched on this real quick, is, is based on your size of your city and your population. So the, I'd like to think, you know, we'd all want to get more, but that's our allotted limit. So I do have to turn in invoices of completed work that takes place and, and I can submit as many as I want. Sometimes you can receive a second payment per project, depending on what you turn in. And our, our local, what I call local projects that we just finished up this summer, were part of what, and then generally what we received money on this time was a C clip from 2024. So the project that was finished a year ago, because there's a, a time allotment that you can go back to receive the funds.
Thank you. Were there any further planned department reports?
We're going to start monthly, including in the commission packet, which is available to the public. Monthly reports from each department on their activities, which are in your packet now. You'd be surprised when you ask people, what does the city do? The answers you get, so this will kind of help them see the things that are, are being done every day and where the money's going.
Okay, our next item is 10A, recess of the regular meeting. Five or 10 minutes to.
I'm good to go.
Good to go. Okay. I'll make a motion to recess and go right into our study session.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are in recess. I will now call to order the August 25th, 2025, City of Avaleen, Kansas, City Commission Study Session. Our first item on the agenda is the Northeast 15th Street Drainage Project, Public Works Director Anderson.
All right, commissioners, we're here once again. Kind of looking for some guidance and input on how you want city staff to proceed on the northeast 15th Street Drainage. Jared Loomis is the engineer from Olson that put together a majority of the report. He was unable to make it today, but Mark Bashamp is here. If any technical engineering questions. We have met once again as a refresher with some of the local individuals, residences that this situation affects. We also have met with one individual about the second, what we're terming the East Detention Pond Basin. Most of you know that Commissioner Kohlhoff is, has some input with property where I believe if I'm stating that right, Commissioner, where Detention Basin One, what we refer to as the West One, when we come up. So at this point, we're kind of, I know we have some individuals here in the public that would like to make some comments. And between Mr. Quinde, City Attorney Martin, public comments, we're, we're just revisiting this once again. See what kind of direction that ultimately you want to direct staff to proceed or not proceed, or, or where we're going to go from this.
Annie, you had alluded that there were some meetings that had happened in the meantime. Would you mind just kind of giving us an update on what transpired there?
Uh, yeah. So I think most of you, at least two of you have heard this before. This has been ongoing for at least six years. This is a huge impact to my property, along with Angela and Luke Geske. I read your minutes from October, November, whenever it was when you had this second study done and frankly, those, those plans didn't help us. It might have helped everybody else downhill from us, but it didn't stop anything that happened at our house. It doesn't stop the water that runs in our yard. It doesn't stop the washout. It doesn't fix anything for us or Luke or Angela on their side of the property either. So I honestly had no clue that you guys were going to make any directive on this a couple of weeks ago until I was talking to my aunt. to my aunt and she informed me that this was gonna happen. So I emailed Mr. Quinde and asked if I could have a conversation with him about what was in the plan and what that looked like. So he met with us, he graciously accepted and met with Geske's, my father-in-law Dawn. And Kevin and I, and we talked about essentially a decision that was made by a city commission a long time ago and how that has affected our property year after year after year, a long time, actually. Had I known then, would I know now? We probably would have never bought our house because the previous owners also fought this fight. We just didn't realize how bad it was. So Brad Anderson, Public Works Director Brad Anderson was also at that meeting at the end and he understood our concerns. And so we were able to then meet with Mr. Loomis. And graciously enough, it rained the day before that meeting. So I was able to capture video of what that looks like and how his plan doesn't help us. It doesn't help anything around our area. And so I think, at least from reading what was submitted today, some of what we talked about was implemented. Honestly, I don't really know how I feel about how the changes that he implemented. I think he's trying to help, but it still requires a grate in our backyard. We still have this whole separate issue of not having a fence up between a business and a residential neighborhood. I can't open curtains in my bedroom window because there could be somebody standing in a storage unit right beside my bedroom window. It's been like this for years. That fence has been down for a long time. This water runoff issue is a huge issue for a lot of people. I guess I was naive back then when I started this process, but my husband took around a petition after three or four city commission meetings to show that it's not just us. There were thirty signatures on that petition to fix the water drainage issue up in that area. I heard you, Mr. Witt, when you said that you don't feel like it's the city's responsibility to fix this unless it's in the good of the public. I struggle with that because a city commission made a decision a long time ago to develop that area and decided natural flow of the water didn't require and law didn't require for them to put any sort of storm drainage in. So there's none in that entire area from the grade school all the way down to Brady. There's none. It's all surface water. Mr. Bex has been here and talked previously. Mrs. Wilson has been here and talked previously. They have put money into their places, just like we have to try to slow this water down and keep it out of our basement. This is a huge issue and it's something that you all should dig into and really seriously consider and look at. I don't want to stop development. Happy the houses were built. But there was some serious oversight when this happened. And all I've really wanted is for somebody to help me fix it. That's all I've been asking for. What else would you like to know? What other questions do you have of me?
Um, I'm really familiar with your property, of course, but I'm not familiar with the Geske property. Can you?
She can talk. And so is Luke. So they're happy to address their concerns too, because they were in those meetings also.
Clarify what I said. It's from briefings that our city attorneys given us. It's a legal obligation of the city versus this public good obligation, which is exactly what I see and why I've supported moving forward with this. So.
Well, frankly, I think you should because you did it for Faith Avenue and that's a lot less houses than what I'm proposing. A lot less.
Do you have an idea of, I'm sorry, if you're, go ahead, if you're.
Clarification on difference of that too, is the Faith Avenue project benefited houses, but it also enabled commercial development. So that wasn't just about those houses.
But still.
Yeah.
A lot less.
Yeah.
A lot less.
Do you, you said that you don't feel like the proposed plan will fix the issue? Do you, or do you have an idea of something that will fix the issue, specifically just with the water? I realize there's another issue that probably needs to be addressed.
Well, we did talk to him about catching some of the drainage that comes off of the buildings themselves because there's nothing that stops that. That water pours off the roofs of the storage units straight onto the ground. I have tons of video. If you guys want to see what that actually looks like. These guys were willing enough to, to look at it. He tried to make, it looks like today anyways, from what I could see. He tried to do some, some catch drainage and some piping to try to fix all of that, but you know, that requires me to give up some of the space in my backyard. So I have to walk around that or see that or keep kids out of it or relinquish it. I don't really know. No one's really talked to us about what that actually means for us or what that looks like. What does that do to our resale value? I feel the same way about the, about the basins, the, the drainage basins. Like, you guys want to look at that in your front yard? I mean, is that what you would like? Is that, I don't know. I just, I really truly don't know how I feel about all of this. I teach eighteen to twenty year olds and constantly talk about solving problems and I don't feel like this is one that's ever sort of been pushed far enough to fix problems here. And it's just, it's really been frustrating. So I don't really know how I feel about it. I probably need a lot more information about what all that new design means for us. I think they're trying. I will say that. I think they're trying to address the issue, but the proposed one before this fixed everything for everybody below us.
Is, and I guess maybe so I'm clear, is there a new proposal than what the commission has seen?
I think the only thing that's been gone and gone through. This is the, this is only my opinion. Where is the city? Or can they mandate that the property owner of the storage rental do their own interior drainage control, catch basins? Basically, in a nutshell, there was a, a, a rough put together of that property. And if they would include their own gutter downspouts or catch basins into, from the gutters, controlling the water and directing it specifically to a specific area. But there again, no, no discussion has been had with the property owner of, of the storage units. And then I guess this would be an errant question. What, what legal side does the city have to enforce that they even try that step? There, there's the gray area of what we're dealing with of where some of this water is being started from. Now I do agree with her comment that we've looked at certain specific plans to control the water as it maneuvers through the neighborhoods and down that way. But their specific piece of property is the very top of the, of the property where the problems start. So I think their question of how do we control it up at the top end before it gets to them catch basins and, and how can we divert it? From their property or deflect it or whatever, whatever you want to do. I know a, a catch basin in the, and in or near their backyard was put in place because that's kind of where it's naturally flowing. But I do believe that Jared made some information about, you know, just take all the houses, take every building away from that ground, just like it was way back when the buffalo roamed and see what the nature of the ground is doing. It's all naturally going a certain direction. And now you've added buildings and surface areas and all and everything. I, I'm not going to speak. Geske's are here, but, but they, they own the, the trailer lot. Trailer court up there on Fourteenth. Some of the drainage design was to put a drainage underground structure, kind of we'd have to obtain an easement, mind you, but put a structure across it and help direct the, the water from that area too. But they made a valid point. What if we want to remove every every trailer up there on that property and they, they want to build duplexes there? Which they, they could do and that'd be great. But then how does that underground, the structures affect their property there? We've got some challenging issues that honestly, we need direction from and I, I don't, I don't know where without some input and knowing what the city's stance, what we can force someone to do. Do, do I think that some drainage structures off of the roof would help? Probably. But at what point do we or the city get involved with telling them, here's what you gotta do? And, and I don't know, Aaron, maybe. Don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I don't know that answer. So.
Sure. And I don't think I have enough information, nor do I want to opine on the legal rights of two private owners. What I can say is Kansas generally recognizes the common enemy rule for water, which is a legal doctrine that says water is the common enemy of all property owners and you can protect your property from it. There are certain limitations on that and I'm not prepared to speak to all of them, but you can't divert water from its natural drainage way on, into a completely different direction. But you can protect your property against water and there's other limitations on what you can do. You can't accumulate it and disperse it all at once onto your neighbor's property and you certainly can't do anything intentionally to cause harm. How any of that would apply, I have not analyzed that, nor, nor my position to. As it relates to the city's role, we of course have development standards that apply to new development. However, it's my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. The many, the, the storage building has been there since nineteen ninety-three, I believe. And that was pursuant to a special use permit that would have been approved by the city. So it's possible we could look into that and see if there are any conditions or standards that address this issue. However, I don't believe that there are based on looking into that previously. I would need more information to answer the question posed by Mr. Anderson about what are the city's options to address the storage owner? That, that, that owner of that property directly and require anything? The Ms. Hookman or her neighbors may have additional rights that the city does not have in that regard. And so I'd be happy to work with their council or city staff to look into that further.
I guess that's what, it's difficult for me to be able to give direction to Brad without knowing the legal abilities that we have. So I really need to know that because if we're not fixing the problem at the tip of the iceberg, there's really no point in doing it. I'd rather find a way that we can fix it right there before it gets into your backyard. And if we have to expend some city funds to do something along that, I'm fine with that. Like I said, whether it gets put on your property or in that by that storage unit, I'm okay spending some of that money to create a public good downstream.
Well, that's essentially why I was told to come here to begin with. So for those of you that don't have the whole historical perspective of this. We were tired of honestly fighting people being in the storage units beside us and not having a fence. So I called Travis Stearman and asked, what are my options? Because this is awful. And the property owner at the time was unwilling to work with us, period. And so he suggested that I come here because there was a storm drainage fund that the property owner of the mini, mini unit, storage units put into. And so that's originally how we got here to begin with was his recommendation to come and seek help from somewhere because the owner of the storage units was unwilling to help us, period.
And I think the ownership that has transitioned now hasn't.
It has. Wouldn't say I love that either.
I think my understanding is that based on those comments, the commission had the drainage study done for the West Basin. And then after that was done, asked for what it would do for the East Basin. And when that was shown to the two families, I believe it's their opinion that that's not going to work. So we invited them to come talk with the engineer and they talked about it along with Dawn and came up with, in your packet, it's the fourth page after the agenda cover sheet, which would show the downspouts and the nauplask drain basins that the engineer discussed. Then again, Brad has a point. I guess there's two points. One, if the property owners think that's gonna work. And two, what the cities city can or cannot do to make sure that makes that happen.
Luke, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Luke Geske, sixteen ninety-three Flag Road, owner of Heartland Trailer Park. I just want to say that I'm not happy with the idea of having a pipe and a permanent easement running across the middle of the back half of the property. We get a lot of runoff from that farthest north mini storage unit there between trailer four and three and between three and two. And I have to, once a year, dig a ditch down through the middle of our property to divert that around over behind Debbie Wilson's area and Doc Biggs's house. So it can flow out that berm to Wildcat, I think is where that is. So I'd like to see something at least put on them downspouts. So it's not just pouring off onto our property. That's, that's about all I have to say. It'd be nice if we could somehow divert that all that runoff from the mini storages to some type of a catch basin on their property and pump it out on Fourteenth Street. That way you don't even have that water running. You know, the other way. Any questions?
I'm just trying to get a, a, a picture here. So you've got, is it on the, the west side? You've got really one, two, three, four, just going straight off the west side there? And you said it's going in between
Between.
Two and three and three and four?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got ditches running off of their property down through there. They've thrown concrete bags and everything like that to try to keep it from flowing fast.
And I, I apologize. I certainly appreciate you being here, but this is the first I've heard of issues on, on your property. I've been more familiar with your neighbors.
I mean, it directly doesn't affect me as much because I don't live there.
Yeah, I understand.
And the water can flow underneath the trailers. I mean, if it needs to. But I do have to dig a ditch, which my tenants complain about because they have to drive through it, but close them down a little bit, I guess.
Yeah, I, you were talking about that, having it drain into a basin on their property. That's, that's kind of what I was envisioning when we were discussing that, you know, even if it's something where we, depending on the legalities of it, but if, you know, we could work with that property owner to have them put up guttering and drain it into a, you know, basin on their property.
They got a pretty good area up in front before it gets to the storage units.
Any of there's no, you know, I guess legal requirement for them to do so, we could also, I mean, I, I feel like if they're having to put on guttering system and the city is putting in a detention basin, that I think they'd be kind of fools to say no to that.
You mentioned pumping or piping water out to Fourteenth Street. I, I think my understanding is that there's no drainage off of
There, there's plenty of drainage up there. I mean, I don't know how big the pipes are, but there's there's one close to Pioneer on each side of the street. And then there's quite a few before you get to Brady Street. Storm drains.
I might be remembering that incorrectly. It might be north of there that I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I think it is north. Is that something we could, I guess you want direction? Is that something we could pursue of looking into figuring out a way to stop it on that specific property? So it doesn't even come off of it?
I think we kind of need to start there.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I guess who's whose conversation is that with the property owner? Is it City of Abilene's? Is it the neighbors? That's kind of where we're honestly kind of stuck, you know, like. And who can truly enforce it on top of that?
Well, I think it sounds like. Well, I think it sounds like maybe Mr. Martin is going to look at the special use permit, see if there's any remedies within that.
I would be happy to, and I may have done that historically. I know that this is not the first time I've heard of this and looked at it, but I'd be happy to look at that. I don't know if now's the time, Mr. Quinde, we had spoken about possibly giving a highlight of the use of a benefit district. Is that, so I'll speak to that briefly. And I say this just so you know my initial threshold opinion, and that is generally, cities have certain immunities arising from water flow that's caused by development. So here you have developed property that is shedding water onto other development and clearly causing issues, not to minimize that. But the state of Kansas law is that the city is not legally responsible for that, based on my understanding of the facts. Starting with that premise, that is not to say that you cannot choose to do something about it if you wish to do so. One method of addressing that would be to create a benefit district. And through that benefit district process, you can build whatever water control improvements the engineer recommends and assess some or all of that cost to the properties within the benefit district that receive the benefit from those improvements. And that is one option in your tool chest. And if you were to go down that road, the city could impose some portion of those costs, if it wished to do so, on the city at large or just through the city's general fund, with the remainder of those costs assessed to the private owners who benefit from those improvements. And you would need more of a study done to know how to define the benefit district, but that happens from time to time. The city, to my knowledge, I went back and looked to see if the city's done anything like that. We haven't formed a benefit district for approximately 10 years, but between 09 and 2015, it was done three or four times. All of those contexts involved new street sewer water improvements for new residential housing developments. But the Benefit District Act would allow you to still go in on an existing neighborhood or area and build drainage improvements and then assess those costs to the benefit district. There's a procedure for doing that. I'd be happy to walk you through it. It generally involves a hearing. However, that process can be short cutted and expedited if the city receives a petition from the requisite number of landowners within the proposed benefit district. So that's one option if you chose to go down the road of exploring improvements and assessing part of those costs to the private owners.
Yeah, I guess I'm not even concerned about that piece of it yet. I was more concerned about just getting those conversations started with that specific landowner. To see, I guess, see what their, I mean, ability is to working to a solution on their property.
Sure. I'd be happy to look at the special use permit and any other provisions of our code or law that enable us to potentially address that. And then I'll have to assess with city staff as to whether that is best broached by the city or the private landowners. And without having all of that information, I'm not prepared to say which way.
And I'll have to apologize to Aaron. He did not get the sheet that the engineers provide after speaking with the two families. I would suggest that while Aaron's looking at the special use permit, that city staff reach out to the property owner of the storage area, show them the proposed plan, at least as a start to address the drainage, get their reaction, report back to city commission, not only with their reaction, but an estimated cost and then what, I guess, avenues we have as an organization. To at least get that part done, and then depending on how that works for the two properties, then look at the drainage basins down the road. But we would involve the two families. I mean, they were very helpful in getting this extra page done when they're talking with the engineers.
That sounds like a good plan to me if you're willing to engage the storage unit property owner. I don't think the adjacent property owners have that responsibility.
I'm Angela Geske, 1693 Flag Road, co-owner of the property. I have a couple other things to add in addition to what's already been said. I don't like the idea of having an above groundwater detention area in a neighborhood where a block and a half or two from a school. I don't know what the city's liability is if a kid gets in there and gets hurt. I feel like that would probably be the city's liability if something like that happened with water in that area. Also, I think they're an eyesore. We've currently got one in front of Family Dollar up on North Buckeye that has 10-foot tall weeds growing in it. Twenty-foot tree. So that was just something in addition to what everyone else has already said. I don't want you guys to vote on this and spend over a half a million dollars on something that's not going to fix the issue for all of the property owners that are involved. It will help slow down water for people who are north of us, but not for us. You know, it rains, it snows, whatever. We've got an entire driveway that we need to, you know, clean out and fix, and our rock is gone, and we don't want to spend money on more rock when it's just going to get washed away. I mean, it does cause some problems. So basically, I'm just asking you guys to study this further, ask questions, get with the engineer, see what other options there are, and do something that's going to benefit everyone involved. I know Luke already said it, but we really are against the idea of having a 10-inch pipe across our property, all the way from the west side to the east side, detention basin one to detention basin two. That's how the drawing was drawn to connect those. Really not going to go for that option. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. I think we're on the same page as far as spending money that doesn't solve the problem, so.
Right. All right. Well, thanks for listening.
Thank you. I guess city attorney Martin interim city manager Quinde, do you have enough direction at least now so we can start that piece of finding a way to stop it where it's starting?
Stated earlier, Don Neville's like 308 Northwest 17th. I'm Kevin's father and his father-in-law. You made a comment earlier about directing the flow of water, changing its course. That can't be done legally?
I was speaking broadly as between two private owners. Yes, there could be exceptions. So if you have, and if you have drain, a natural drainage channel through your yard, for example, and you blockade it and dam it so that it starts going the opposite direction and flooding property where that water never would have gone in the first place, that might be one of the exceptions, the common enemy rule, which, you know, starts with the foundation that water is everyone's enemy. Everyone's entitled to get it away from them. But you can't do so in a way that makes things way worse off than it would have been had no development occurred. Now, that being said, that is a very nuanced exception, and I don't proclaim to apply it to this case or any case. It would need to be very fact-specific inquiry, but yes, there are exceptions, one of which is diverting the natural flow of water.
But that's been done up there. I mean, vastly, every storage unit that was built, especially the last one that was built, the far northwest one, and that one has probably created more problems than all the rest of them put together. And in one of our, through our discussions with Brad and with John, was to hopefully get with that property owner and see if he could move that storage unit out of there again and reshape that land to be, put some small collection basins up there and pipe the water instead of having the eyesore collection basins, I mean, small ones, concrete ones. Because the maintenance on the groundwater collection basins, just like she said, the one on North Buckeye by Family Dollar. I mean, I don't know if any of you driven by that, looked at it lately. John, he got to drive by it every day. There's a tree in there that's probably 15-foot tall now, and the weeds are horrible. It's an eyesore, and they probably get silted shut and don't drain properly, and it's just an ongoing mess. So that's all I've got to say.
Do we have any further comments at this time for that item? I think we've got a good direction at least to try to start working on finding a solution that catches it right there on that property. I shouldn't say solution, but we've at least are focused on that now. Seeing then, we will move into item 2B, STO UPOC ordinances, interim finance director Breon.
Chief Wilkins is actually going to take this one.
That didn't get updated on the agenda. Welcome, chief.
Typically, I would say a good afternoon, commission, but I think good evening might be more appropriate.
Want to take a second and I could try to interrupt you, but congratulations. I'll speak on my behalf, but this is the first time I could call you chief, so it's exciting.
I appreciate the support I've received the last five days has been very humbling, very overwhelming, and I appreciate that. Before you tonight is a recommendation from staff that at your next meeting, you approve the 2025 standard traffic ordinance and the 2025 Unified Public Offense Code. These are books published annually by the League of Kansas Municipalities following the legislative session. It's designed to provide a comprehensive traffic code and public offense ordinance for Kansas cities. Changes do not take effect in municipality until the governing body passes the ordinance, and then the ordinance is then published. I believe behind the cover page, you guys have the information pertaining to the changes in 2025. They're very, very minor. With that, I'll be happy to try to field any questions that you have.
Do you want to just briefly hit those changes?
Sure.
Just so they're on the recording.
Three to the STO, one of them is just simply a typo that the state corrected. The second involves a vehicle passing, a stationary vehicle displaying a hazard or a caution signal if you're pulled over on the side of the road, addressing an issue with your vehicle with your hazards on. And on a vehicle that is looking to overtake you now has to move over to the other lane, if applicable, or at least slow down and pass you in a safe manner. The last one in the standard traffic ordinance is basically replaces a ordinance that was set to sunset. It was actually in last year's. They're just simply, instead of 20.1.2, it's now, or 201.2, it's now 201.1 again, and it deals with failure to comply with a traffic citation. The state changed some verbiage in that. The only change made to the uniform Public Offense Code deals with trespassing on critical infrastructure facilities, and they just expanded areas that would fall under that typically. You'd be looking at water, waste, property dealing with electricity, things like. I believe that was it.
This might be a question, I guess, for you or Mr. Quinde, but do we have a full copy of those to review?
I know we purchased an electronic copy that can be disseminated.
Okay, I'd appreciate that certainly. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any further questions for Chief Wilkins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is 2C, KDOT connecting links agreement. I've got public works director Anderson, but I was wrong last time, so.
All right, commissioners, this is a, we were contacted by KDOT. They are in the process of renewing all connecting link agreements within the state of Kansas. The simple termination terminology for that, I should say, is that any state-owned highway that runs through a city in which the municipality takes care of the main highway signs, any kind of a features that run along the city within the city limits, there's agreements. So this is updating a agreement that's been in place since 1992. At that point, we maintain 10.25 lane miles, at $2,000 per lane mile for an annual payment of $20,500. That agreement could end within, in any 30-day notice. Basically, the new one, the new agreement that was go in effect September 1, will now maintain, the city will maintain 10.838 lane miles at $5,000 per lane mile for an annual payment of $54,190. Once again, a lane mile considers, you know, Buckeye is four lanes wide, two, two in each direction. So that's how that's calculated. There was some deliberation that went on between city attorney Martin and KDOT just for clarification on some of the topics. And if he wants to put in any information that he found on that, or Mr. Quinde, I think they can fill you in, but basically it's a new agreement. I think one of the things that was a key difference, I'll read this, that is agreement can no longer be ended with 30-day notice. Termination is allowed only when a replacement agreement is executed. That's the key part with that, other than the, probably a good thing, the increase in dollar amount of lane miles. I'm only personally assuming that because of the cost of, it's been so long since they've updated it, and then the cost of everything to do that now is why the change was recommended.
Is there a standard timeframe on these that they're usually updated? It seems odd that it hasn't been since 92.
In my career, this is the only one I ever went, went by. So no, it's not something that's relatively done. Why? I don't understand why it isn't updated more, especially when a majority of the, a good number of cities in the state of Kansas have state highways that at some point run through them.
Well, it's just funny looking at this and the agreement.
I agree.
The previous agreement's older than me.
Yes. Okay, any other questions for that?
Questions for public works director Anderson on that. Our next item is 2D, moderate income housing, notice of application interim city manager Quinde.
It's a Golden Belts West multifamily LLC approached city staff about submitting or working with them on a moderate income housing grant. It's a grant program that the city has used before for housing development. And the first step is to submit a notice of application, which is due at the beginning of September. And we have somebody from Golden Bell. I hear you have questions about the specific project. If you guys want to talk about it real quick, come on up and tell them about the project.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for the time here. We, as you know, we built the Golden Ridge Apartments, and we've got 12 units out there, and we've got them full, and they're going pretty well. And so we'd like to build another set, another 12-plex out there. And basically, we'd just like to ask for your support for the exact same deal that we got last time with the RHID, and we're applying for the MIH and tax credits. And so that's really what we're here for, and we appreciate your support to provide more housing here.
And just while you're up here, do you want to state your name for us and who you're with?
I'm with McCullough Development.
I knew it, but I.
And the mission knows that only cities under a population of 60,000 can apply for moderate income housing grants. So it's a partnership and a pass-through to the developer. And we'll bring back the notice of application to the commission and ask for your approval at the September 8 meeting, meet the deadline.
Do we have any questions for staff or the members present?
Just really quick, we're doing both the KHITC and MIH, correct?
The MIH, yes. MIH, the city applies for, the income tax credits, the developer applies for, but the city provides support.
Yeah, we have to have, I think there's an official document that we have to prepare for the developer. Is that correct?
This is just to introduce the project and ask permission in two weeks to submit the notice of application in time. Then it'll be a flurry of documents coming to you with all the details. A flurry of documents coming to you with all the details.
Can you, uh, go over again, the, the R H I D scheme that we had for that? I know that was different than the, than I think what some of the other developers have out there.
The R H I D, I'm not sure what you mean by scheme.
Uh, I guess there's some sort of revenue share with, uh.
It's listed in the packet.
Developer.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause we had to adjust it a little bit to, since we weren't doing duplex lots, we're. Yeah, it's a fifty fifty split, but the revenue is still higher for the city than if there were duplexes.
Yep, it's fifty fifty like, uh, Commissioner Whit says. It will require a new development agreement for the phase two though.
And then are we also extending that purchase option? At the next meeting?
The next meeting is just a notice, uh, of application.
There's a lot of stuff on your, on your sheet here. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Just a notice of application to next one. Then we'll bring you a full M I H application and pack it with all the agreements.
Thank you.
We have any further questions on that? Thank you. Next item is two E water utility revenue requirements analysis interim city manager, Quinte.
I'm just, uh, a whole levy of good news, um. The water utility, the one with the sewer, but today we'll just talk about the water utility is operated in a deficit for the past five years. Expenses in, uh, twenty twenty. Were about one point seven and they've risen to two point five million in twenty twenty-four, while revenues only grew from one point six million to, uh, one point nine. The imbalance produced an annual loss of five hundred and sixty-six thousand and twenty-four. Project a loss of eight hundred and forty-five thousand and twenty-five, which Brad and Kelsey were able to get down to, uh. Zero and without an adjustment in revenue, you would have another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit in. At twenty twenty-six, which you can't do because you don't have any more reserves. Doing just a simple calculation of, uh, the cost of produced water. Right now, we're projecting that the, uh, cost to produce a thousand gallons of water is five dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand. Uh, and that'll rise to six dollars and ninety cents in twenty twenty-six. To put that in, uh, comparison, uh, residential and commercial customers within the city pay four dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand. And the rural water district pays a dollar eighty per thousand gallons. Now, it's my understanding that the water district contributed about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars back in nineteen ninety-eight. Or, uh, eight million dollar water treatment plant. Um, but that investment has long since been repaid by more than two decades of discounted wholesale rates. Uh, which has now left residential and commercial customers shouldering nearly all the system's cost. That graph there just shows you the revenue expenses for the utility for the past five years. Does he know the next one? Those are the costs, uh, which I can send that to you, broke down by categories. And you can see that the, uh. I can't tell you the color, but it goes up and goes down is the capital improvements. Okay. I'll send that to you. Uh, but as we talked about before, the, uh, rural water district uses about twenty percent of all the water produced. Uh, yet they only contribute about three percent of the, uh, revenue to the utility. So, um. What staff is recommending, we don't have, uh, any suggestions now is that one. That you make an adjustment in the next month or two to the customer charge. Right now it's eighteen seventy-seven. Which is significantly lower than, uh, people around us, other utilities. You have a customer charge generally in a utility that is intended to cover the fixed cost of, uh, utility. Anything that you're paying for, whether you're producing a product or not. Then the volumetric charge for water, which currently stands at four forty-seven for residential and commercial. And a dollar eighty for the rural water district could cover your variable cost, the cost of chemicals, uh, cost of electricity. Uh, those inputs that produce the water. It's unrealistic, uh, for a utility, especially a municipal utility, to put all of their fixed cost into a, uh, customer charge. If you did so, it'd be way too high, um. So there's a balance between putting, uh, most of your fixed cost into that customer charge and then adjusting your volumetric rate based on, uh. Your inputs. So our recommendation will be to come back to the, uh, commission in the next month or two. Uh, to recommend a change to your base charge to shore up those fixed costs. And then to do a full cost of service study, um. For the, the utility. And what that does, all I've done is a simple revenue requirements. You take your expenses and, uh, your revenues. And you determine how much, uh, it's costing you and what you need to generate in revenue. Cost of service will look at each customer class, commercial and residential. Uh, within the city limits, then you have another class of commercial and residential outside the city limits. And then your wholesale customer or the rural water district, which I understand is, uh, under a forty year agreement. Uh, but that will take those customer classes and assign costs. For the utility to provide them service based on the demands that they place on, uh, the utility. And just for discussion or illustration purposes, most residential customers use most of their water in the morning and at night. You know, when they're getting up and getting ready to go to work, when they get home and they're shutting down for the night. Where, uh, commercial customers, it's pretty flat. There's not a high demand. So I would recommend that, uh, you do that and by January. You take those recommendations and depending on what they are, either implement them right away or over a period of time. The revenue that. Uh, deficit is pretty significant. If you were to, and I'm not advocating this now, but if you were to adjust the customer charge from eighteen seventy-seven to, uh. By ten dollars, you have thirty-two hundred, uh. Meters customers, you would generate, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, additional a month, so six hundred thousand dollars additional a year. You're storing up most of your deficit there. Then your volumetric charge would not need to be as high. You should at least cover your expenses of what you're, uh, caution you produce. But this is more of a, a heads up that been talking about the, um. Water and wastewater utility having deficits. Uh, this is why for the water and we will bring back to you some, uh, suggestions as far as the, uh, customer fees, what that looks like. Uh, but as far as changing the water rates per hundred gallons or per thousand gallons. I would recommend that you engage somebody to do a full cost of service study. In addition to, uh, giving you the equitable numbers. It's also something defensible that if you were to have to increase rates for a wholesale customer. That you have that, that it's not just something that we made up. It's transparent. It tells the customers, this is why you get charged what you get charged rather than just, well, we needed eight hundred thousand dollars. So we threw a number out there to, to make it work. Since it's, uh, way after six, that was my fastest version I could give you.
And we, we've discussed, um, having a tier-based system as well, or tier-based fees.
Yeah, currently, uh, I believe it's, you have to use more than two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons for that, uh, rate. And that actually goes down. Most communities or most utilities now will set, uh, tiers for residential and commercial. But when you get to a certain threshold, your costs go up. And what that, and the intent is, is the more you use, the more you pay, but it also protects those people who are on fixed incomes. I always use the example of the, uh, the widow or the widower who's on a fixed income. And maybe they only use twelve hundred gallons of water, uh, a month. And then other communities that I've worked at, you know, if you'd have a charge from zero to three thousand gallons, that's the lowest possible charge. But you use three thousand, one to five thousand, you pay a little bit more. And you have people out there that really do use sixty thousand gallons of water at their house a month. Maybe they have the swimming pool or whatever, but they're more likely to be able to pay for that additional cost. That's something, uh, we'll look at with our cost of service.
Something I've seen, I guess maybe you have a familiarity with this as well, but typically those rates do go up for residential. Customers by volume, but they go down for commercial customers, assuming that we're looking for. Potentially industrial users who are higher users, I mean, desirable industries to have in the community.
Uh, it depends on your customer class, residential and commercial. And my experience has been the more you use, the more you pay. But large users or wholesale or, uh, industrial users, uh, generally. And I can't, I've not looked at other cities, but, uh, those are flat. So. Well, I can use an example of, uh, an industrial customer of a community I, I know that uses fifty percent of the water consumed. Their water is, uh, a little bit less than residential and commercial, but it's a constant. Uh, and their fees are, meter fees are higher.
I think my familiarity is with the city of Emporia where they have the meatpacking as the, they probably. Are very similar where they're using half of the water produced in the city.
Yeah.
For meatpacking.
Yeah, and there are some places that, uh, for industrial customers, more, the more you use, the less you pay. Uh, in the current state or financial state, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that. Well, for two reasons. One, your resources are. I think Brad used the word tenable, uh, we need to look at additional resources. I was should, I wouldn't say you should turn away a customer or industrial customer that would use a lot of water. We just have to plan and make sure that we can handle that.
Any further questions on this item?
I guess that's my concern that we're not, uh, limiting economic development by, um, putting in a water rate that's unsustainable for. A desirable, uh, company to the degree that we can service them.
Well, and the idea of the, um. Cost of service study is so the commission has that right in front of them that. Based on this customer class and their usage, this is the demand they place on the system so you can make an informed choice. Rather than just saying, we need eight hundred thousand dollars, so let's divide that amongst thirty-two hundred customers. That's not equitable or is a fair way to do it. And a cost of service study will probably not be done and recommended to you till. I'd say till December or January at the end of this.
Thank you. Our next item is two F state revolving fund, SCADA replacement for water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. Public Works Director Anderson. I hope I said SCADA correct.
Yes, you did. Um, so Commissioners, uh, a little bit of background, uh. It's been quite a while, but we actually, um, applied for S R F funding. Um, for the state revolving loan for, um. Actually, three applications originally and, uh, two have been preliminarily, uh. We've been preliminary, they accepted, uh, the general consensus that once you get on them, um. You're in pretty good shape to obtain, but I guess what we're talking about here is the SCADA. Uh, controls for both the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant, so I can kinda dummy it down a little bit, um, cause that's what I have to do. Um, when we're talking this, um, so this is the brains of the network, um, the computer system and the P L Cs that, um, basically. Our plants, um, talk to and, and direct, um, the information. So that, uh, everything transmits to the wells, comes into the plant and works operationally as it should. Um, the reason we're at this point is because we've had several of our, um, SCADA information cards. Over the last few years, at least since I've been here, failing. And, uh, we're at this point, we found a couple of vendors and vendors are getting hard to. Find for the networking that we currently use, um, but we're basically purchasing refurbished SCADA's cards. And operating off of them, um. Uh, we'd like to think that there's plenty of them out there, but we've kinda found some evidence that, um. Are getting hard to come by. Um, so I, it's, in this world, it's just something that I think, uh. We need to look at, uh, upgrading our whole system to a new network. And so, uh, we had some, uh, engineering, preliminary engine reports. Put together and it basically went through, um, of course, engine, engineering estimates of what it would cost to replace. Basically, uh, the upgrade with, um, just the P L Cs and some SCADA, and then we had an, an upgrade of what it would. Um, take to, um, potentially cost, replace everything that goes into the whole, the wiring, the networking, everything. Um, based on the information that we have, um. We feel that, uh, at that point, we don't, we don't need to replace all wiring and everything. We only need to replace the SCADA parts. We feel everything else that we have is in really good shape, excuse me, shape. And so, um, there's just a couple of recommendations that we wanted to, to bring to your point and if you. You know, once again, um, Mr. Mike Blacketers is here. If you, if you have any, uh, true. Questions that, about the detail of, of how they work and, and what they program and everything, but we, we did kinda have an. An estimate, just so you know that the wastewater SCADA upgrade, um. Was, uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand on the low end, um. To five hundred and sixty-four and on the, uh, water treatment plant, three hundred and eighteen thousand to five twenty-eight. This, of course, would be, um, if we get this far into it, would be a, a bid process by vendors who are specialized in this. This type of work and, uh, we would see where the, the true bids truly come in at. So, um, basically this is bringing it to your attention. We kinda tried to keep you in the loop, um. As long as we could, um, when we were going through this process and then once we got notification. Um, I think the one key thing is here and Mr. Bashamp might know this, but, uh. We do have to have an answer back, whether or not we're gonna be interested in, in even going ahead and applying, um, for the loan. And, uh, which was a low interest, by the way, and I think some of that was in your packet. Uh, so that we can move forward or, um, I guess if we don't move forward. A direction of what plan we wanna do, cause I, I personally feel that. This is the brains of the whole network and both of them. This is what makes them work. Um, so I, I don't wanna push this off. If we don't go the state revolving loan way, then. Help us figure out a way where, how we're gonna do this.
Yeah, it is included in there roughly three point zero nine percent. I, I guess that was in July. Um, a couple of questions. What's the typical life expectancy of a new system?
Caught me off guard here.
I know.
I don't know the, you know, the, the plant with what we've been working on has lasted, what year?
Uh, the cars that are in there now are originally ninety-eight. So, so far they've lasted twenty-seven years. Kind of, uh, kinda hard to determine what the life expectancy is.
Sure.
Obviously, we've replaced quite a few of them by now too, so.
Do you know what the terms are on that state revolving fund loan? Maximum of twenty years? Oh, okay.
What, um, what are the life expectancies of the replacement units?
Uh, again, couldn't tell you for sure. Um, the originals were, they're lasting most of them twenty-seven years, but. As we all know, old tech is better than new tech. Um, our refrigerator today, you know, it'll last like five years when our parents had them for fifty, so. I'd like to say we can get another twenty-five, thirty years out of the new ones, but. It's probably more like ten fifty on us.
I think part of the process there is, and we get into a newer system, you know, we have something. When that time comes, start to fail, we'll have a better accessibility of finding instead of. Widening that gap even further with what we have right now. We're fortunate right now that, um. And I, I can't even tell you where they're getting them if they're relying on. An example of our plant for when something gets switched out that we send in our old stuff and they're refurbishing him and. Rebuilding them and hoping that, you know, I, I, I don't know where they're getting them from, to be honest.
Currently, uh, any of them that we've gotten replaced has been through our vendors. Utility Help Net, H O A Solutions, or, uh, Ari Pedrati before them.
I guess that's what begged the question for me and. If, if we're, you know, realistically gonna plan on a ten to fifteen year life expectancy, I'm not super keen on financing them over twenty years. Um, I mean, I mean, it's low, pretty low interest rate, but. Just making sure.
And that's the question. We're kinda, when you listen to them two quote bids, we're. We're right in the middle of, and, and I know we've been talking a lot of budgeting lately and budgeting for next year and, and how we finish out this year with. Where we've already cut from them specific departments just to make things match and, but, um. I, I'm kinda, well, I'll just say this, you're, you're torn between, yeah, I'm just throwing out the number, trying to finance. Seven hundred thousand dollars or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and, and then you think about, well, how, how can we just pay for that? And I mean, that'd be phenomenal, but, uh, that's the question we're at posing, but I think, uh. The next part of it is, excuse me, Mark, do you remember the date that this is actually due and we have to?
Mark Bashamp with Olson, and there is a significant amount of paperwork to fill out. A lot of it is financial capability, even though it's not much money. You still have to prove how you're gonna pay for it and there's a lot of documents that need to be sent in with this. The main thing is, is a thirty day public hearing notice. The main thing is, is a thirty-day public hearing notice. So from the time it's published to the public hearing and all of that has to be submitted with the affidavits by October fifteenth. So the clock is running, uh, as far as getting this, uh, in the process and, and, uh, back to KDHE.
Is there, um, an early payoff penalty?
Yes, you can pay, you can pay off early.
Yeah.
You know, there's no penalty.
Great.
Yeah, the minimum term is twenty years, but you, uh, can prepay without a penalty.
Yeah.
And, uh, to answer Brad's question, you can probably tell that I'm opposed to borrowing money anytime we can avoid it, but without the SRF in the condition that the water and wastewater funds are in, uh, the only way you have, only option you have is to do an SRF or some other type of loan to, to get these here.
Just one other tidbit of information, SRF loans, uh, when you get the project done and it's completed, normally your payments don't start for another year after that. So you're looking at probably a year and a half to two years probably before your first payment is due. So you even know, and then you could probably just pay it off if you choose to or not follow up with the loan, low, final loan agreement.
Is there any obligation to proceed if we apply? If we apply for the loan, are we obligated to go forward with it?
To go forward with the project?
With the loan specifically, I guess.
No, yeah, you can, you can go forward with the loan application and then pull it back, but I'm assuming, but I don't know, we have to have a conversation with KDHE.
You can apply, uh, if you're accepted, the governing body does not have to accept the loan. And I don't believe you're getting any extra points, but there are some revenue requirements for, uh, an SRF loan. For example, you have to have at least a eleven percent reserve, uh, for repayment. So that'll impact what your, your rates are going to do also. But like Mark said, you generally have a year to eighteen months from the time that you're approved, uh, until you have to start paying it back.
Yeah, so, um, that was the information presented today. I'm assuming we'll bring it back at the next meeting and see if we get some directions so that at least we can move forward with, uh, the application and forward with the project.
Yeah, I don't, um, I have, I guess my personal thought on it is, I have, with direction in mind is, um, go ahead and, I mean, we can plan on starting that process for the application. I don't know how everyone else feels about it right now, but it doesn't hurt us to at least plan to start that application process. Like I said, we're not bound to it and there's no, we, there's no early payoff penalties or anything like that, so.
And not to muddy the waters, but, uh, I would recommend that you do at least apply. You don't have to accept it. And depending on what your, um, C clip project comes in, if it comes in at one point, whatever, million dollars, you borrowed one point nine, you can, with some work, repurpose the balance of that if you don't want to, uh, pay off the temporary notes early, but it would take a an evaluation on which one's better to the, to the city, that which percentages are you going to have, is the lower for you, but that's anything down the road.
Yeah, I would imagine that three point oh nine is going to be lower than.
Yeah.
What we do.
But that's just a.
Yeah.
It's an option.
Have any further questions on that item? I can entertain a motion to adjourn. It's moved.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Hi.
Myself, yes, motion carries.